Hello, council members. I see that it is at a point in time, seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome Vice Mayor and Councilmember Tiedemann, I mean, Councilmember McQuaid and Councilmember Nathan. I will go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. The city of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Leechon. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gary is absent, I believe. Councilmember McQuaid?
Here.
Councilmember Nathan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Here.
And Mayor Jordan?
Here. In light of so many recent events, too many recent events. On a related, the Pew Resource Center finds that eighty-one percent of Americans support background checks for all gun purchases without exception. Sixty-four percent support banning magazines that hold more than ten rounds. Sixty-three percent support banning assault-style weapons. Seventy-nine percent oppose allowing concealed carry of a gun without a permit, which is now becoming the norm in some states. Another topic that we've heard much about daily, sixty-one percent of Americans support women's right to choose in all or most cases. So why can't we get these policies adopted? Why are we going in the opposite direction? Seems to be all due to one of those damaging compromises ultimately that was made in order to actually create the country. Should namely the Senate. Even without a filibuster now, sixteen percent of the population can elect senators to block policy that's preferred by the rest of the population. With the filibuster, that number goes down to nine percent. That reality is not only risking policies that would keep us healthy and whole. It's also risking the function of the Supreme Court. As we saw by the over-year delay and ultimate refusal to consider the nomination of Merrick Garland in the Supreme Court. And it's also beginning to fail to hold the president to account. I'm not much for sentiments and adjectives rather than action. It is increasingly clear our democracy needs major corrective action at the potential risk of its survival. I encourage you to do what you can to work for any of the needed corrections to keep our democracy going and to allow the wisdom of the American people to be reflected in its policies. Without, we'll move on to the item regarding sixteen hundred Solano Avenue. This opens the public hearing regarding the council's consideration of design review and sequoia compliance of a proposed project at sixteen hundred Solano Avenue and issuance of a conditional use permit for two medical offices proposed as part of the project. The hearing will proceed as follows. First, each council member will report any ex parte communication regarding the proposed project. Ex parte means communications that have occurred from council members discussing the project with others in advance of this public hearing. Following the applicant will have the opportunity to present the project. Or I am sorry, then staff will present their report regarding the proposed project. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity to present the project. The council can then ask questions of staff and the applicant. Subsequently, attendees will have the opportunity to comment. The public hearing will then close and the council will proceed to deliberate the three requested approvals. Councilmembers, may you please each report any ex parte communications that you have had regarding this application? I will take volunteers or I will call them people as you prefer.
Volunteering.
Thank you.
I had a brief conversation on the street with Robert Chastey, who approached me while I was near the the project site. I was also approached by Alison Grinstead and explained that I, you know, could not discuss the project. We we did talk, but we talked about other other matters and general matters.
Thank you, Councilmember Nathan. Councilman McQuaid?
Thank you. I'm not sure this qualifies under here, but we'll we'll say it anyway. I did meet last week with Director Bond for a service, a staff review, so I understood the project a little better.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
I do not believe I have anything to report.
Thank you. I, for my part, I've certainly met with Director Bond as well to discuss the project, which I appreciated. Also was on the phone with Robert Chacey about a different issue and he raised this issue and I listened to what he had to say about it. Other than that, no other communication that isn't otherwise in the written record. Staff, may the council have your report regarding the application and the various approvals that would be required?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. My name is Jeff Bond. I'm the Community Development Director for the city. Our office is processing this planning application. Joining me on the virtual dais this evening is Carla Violet. She is with the consulting firm of Urban Planning Partners based in Oakland. They're a well-known firm that, among other things, provides staff support to various cities on processing applications like this. Carla has assisted us last year with the project at five forty San Pablo Avenue and has also helped significantly through the processing of this application. I want to just take a few moments to kind of give some context and framework and then I'll turn it over to Carla to talk about the specifics of the of the building. And and then we'll be happy to answer your questions. Also, certainly want to acknowledge there are city attorneys here to help answer any of the the legal questions that you might have. I think we'll be prepared to to pass the baton back and forth as as your questions go in different directions. I just want to introduce this process, project in this discussion, the staff report by saying this is puts us in a difficult position. The standards in our general plan, the standards in our zoning ordinance reflect decades of work by planning commissioners and city council members and members of the community who put input, added input into what today we have on the books. And and for the large part, it's it's the right fit for Albany. There are good standards. For better or worse, state law has changed dramatically in the last few years. And a lot of the standards that are on our books simply do not apply anymore to multifamily residential projects. In particular, in the last five or six years, the state legislature has has drafted legislation and our current governor and the previous governor signed that legislation into law. This dramatically changed how we process these applications. And I think is is part of the frustration I believe many members of the public have about this project and this process. Having said that, you know, we do have responsibility to uphold state law. We can't simply sidestep the fact that that the legislature has changed the the rules of the game on us. Among the changes in law of California density bonus regulations, the California Housing Accountability Act, the Housing Crisis Act of twenty nineteen, sometimes referred to as Senate Bill three thirty, and amendments to the California Environmental Quality Act. The intent of this legislation, in my view, is my understanding of legislative intent was to limit the city's discretion in processing an application like you have before you this evening. And and in particular, applications that contain affordable housing. And and then the practical matter is it limits our ability to impose kind of impose subjective standards in in a manner that we normally would in the past and continue to do in other types of projects. I suppose irony here is that a single-family home now goes through a much more rigorous design review process here in Albany than a multifamily residence that would be much larger and conceivably have more impacts. So next slide, if you would, Carla. As as the mayor noted, this is the the sequence of actions this evening. So we can go on to, I won't repeat that. Next slide, please. I I do want to acknowledge the significant number of of emails and letters that we have received. We've tried to absorb all that information. It's extraordinary number, frankly. And I believe that the city clerk has been trying to keep up with the flow and get them posted on the the city's webpage associated with this agenda package. This slide just summarizes a few of the points, particularly the concerns that we're hearing, and I just want people to know that we're we're hearing that. A lot of discussion about parking, concern about congestion and and safety of our roadways, particularly at Wardway and Solano Tacoma. And then the scale of amassing of the building and whether it's really appropriate or not for Solano Avenue. A lot of people feel like it's out of scale. And then the impact on on some of the neighboring properties. There are really significant impacts on some of the immediately adjacent properties. There's no question about it's it's a larger building that that that's going to be the largest building in the immediate area. Having said that, there were lots of concerns expressed. I do also want to acknowledge that we see that we see the number of emails expressing support for the project acknowledging that the the region and the state is in a housing crisis and that this is one of many different ways that we can address that housing crisis here in Albany. Next slide, please. So the actions before you are are in a resolution. It's twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one, and there are basically three pieces to it. There is an infill exemption determination for the California Environmental Quality Act. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on that in a second. There's design review of the architecture and and site planning. To some degree, this is limited by state law. It's not the kind of design review that we do on other types of projects. And then there's a conditional use permit for the ground floor medical space. And that's that's kind of separate from the housing. It's you, you're going to have to take a kind of set aside for the moment what's going on above and think about whether or not medical uses on the ground floor are appropriate. And next slide, please. So I'm just going to have a couple more slides I want to touch on with the sequel and then I'll turn it over to Carla. The infill development categorical exemption is something that has evolved in the last few years as a frequently used mechanism in to reach compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And basically, the way that the law is written and the guidelines have are based on the law is that if you meet these five criteria on the screen, and I'll summarize them verbally here first in a second. You don't need to go any further into sequoia analysis. The first is consistency with, the key word here is applicable general plan and zoning regulations. Because of these new state laws, a lot of our general plan and zoning regulations are not applicable. The second, substantially surrounded by urban uses. I think that's pretty straightforward. The third is no value as a habitat. Again, I think that's pretty straightforward. We did look carefully at our the habitats throughout the city when we prepared our general plan back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, and we use that analysis as as the background for this part of the determination. The next is related to traffic noise, air quality and water quality. Traffic has traditionally in the sequel world was something that was frequently analyzed and debated and often you could see mitigation measures that ended up adding roadways or intersections or what have you into projects. The state law has changed dramatically, and now the measure of a traffic impact is whether overall vehicle miles traveled in the in the area will increase or decrease because of this project. And the Alameda County Transportation Commission has a a tool that can be used to help make that determination. And then water quality, I wanted to touch on that briefly. We did receive some comments today regarding and yesterday, I believe, I lose track of exactly what day some of these things came in. Expressing some concern about water quality, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment and talk a little bit more about how we're addressing that to to make sure that people are comfortable that we have that covered. And then finally, required utilities and public services. Basically, everything is is in or immediately nearby the 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 city right away. So things like suburbs and storm drains and so forth are adequate for this project. This tends to apply if you're doing some sort of greenfield development or maybe you have to run a storm drain a mile or two, not applicable in this circumstance. So next slide, please. Here we go. So what I'd like to do is read a couple of paragraphs that we would like to recommend be added to the categorical exemption regarding water quality. If you'll bear with me, I'll just read these out loud. And with the the council's concerns at the end of the discussion later on, we would, we would edit that document just just to show a little bit more detail than what was in the draft about how we will evaluate water quality. So I'll just go ahead and read this out loud. As part of the building permit review process, the applicant will be required to complete the stormwater requirements checklist. This checklist was prepared by the Alameda County Clean Water Program, which is an association of the agencies in Alameda County that manage separate storm drain systems and creek channels that discharge urban runoff to San Francisco Bay. The checklist systematically evaluates the existing and future impervious surfaces created by new development and assists in the determination of the level of regulatory requirements. Next paragraph, next slide, please. If the analysis detailed in the checklist results in a determination that a project is set to the MPDES Section C three requirements, then the applicant will be required to include site design measures, source controls, and stormwater treatment measures, for example, typically bio-retention and or biofiltration measures as specified in the Association C three technical guidance document. If the area of impervious surface is less than the requirement established in Section C three, the project is not subject to Section three, C three requirements, but nonetheless is required to incorporate one or more site design measures, source control measures, and construction best management practices listed in the checklist. So the point of all this is there's more to it than there's there's a behind the scenes in the building permit phase of if this project gets approved and goes into a building permit phase. There's a lot of analysis that goes into affirming that the water quality concerns are fully compliant with state and federal law. And and that's what we're trying to express in this in this paragraph. So next slide, please. Here we go. So I'm going to turn it over to Carla now, who will tell you a little bit more about the project itself. And we'll try to do this pretty quickly. We know there's a lot of people who want to address the council and imagine the council will have a lot of questions for us. So take it away, Carla.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening. The project before you tonight proposes twelve residential units within a four-story building approximately sixty feet in height with two proposed income restricted units at the low income level. The ground floor would include two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three square feet of medical service uses. And there would be thirty protected bicycle parking spaces in addition to two off-street parking spaces. This slide shows the basement level, first floor, and then second through fourth floors. And for those not familiar, primary access for medical patients and employees is from Solano Avenue. And the main residential entry is from Ordway Street. And the Ordway entry also allows access to patients and employees that they would need to be buzzed in. So there's an entry call box there. And once inside, there's actually a call button for the elevator to access the first floor for that medical space. With respect to unit mix, there would be three one-bedroom units and nine two-bedroom units. And we've included a few of the renderings here just to give you an idea of what the building looks like as proposed. And this is the view from Solano and Ordway. Just to highlight a couple of things that we mentioned at Planning Commission, some changes made by the applicant. There's some orange, kind of burnt orange accents added here to that facade. And let's see, next slide here. Here's the view from Ordway Street. Corrugated more in metal panels were added for some additional visual interest. And this again is the entryway for primarily for residents. And here is a view from the south side of the building. The windows shown here were enlarged. They were fairly small the last round. And then finally, the view from the east at the back of the building. There were niches added here as well as that burnt orange color again. And this is a view from the top portion of the project. So you can kind of see the roof deck space that counts towards open space requirements along with one larger balcony. So overall, the applicant is proposing just shy of a thousand square feet of open space. And transitioning a little bit more into the state density bonus law information to get into a little more detail from what Jeff introduced us to. Solano Commercial Zoning District Density Standard is sixty-three units per acre. And with that in mind, this project site could accommodate up to eight units. And the applicant is requesting a fifty percent density bonus to achieve twelve units. And in exchange, the project proposes two units on site affordable to low-income households. And under state density bonus law, there are unlimited waivers and up to three concessions for projects proposing twenty-five percent low-income units. And this project is seeking three waivers, and that includes an increase to the mixed-use development floor area ratio from one point two five to three point seven five. An increase in building height from thirty-five to sixty feet and a reduction in the open space requirements from I'm sorry, this slide has the old information, but it's from twenty-four hundred square feet to that nine hundred and ninety-eight square feet for the project. And the concession is to reduce the number of required off-street parking spaces from twenty-six to two. With respect to bicycle parking, there are thirty protected parking spaces proposed. This includes twenty protected spaces in the lobby and two cargo spaces in the garage. Two spaces for medical patients and employees. And then six spaces for residents on floors two through four. And as mentioned before, there are also two outdoor bicycle racks at the corner of Solano and Ordway. For vehicle parking, there are no spaces proposed for residential units and then two spaces proposed for the medical services. So there are a total of twenty-six spaces required to proposed. Happy to go back and look at any of these slides if there are questions, but with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Jeff to finish a stop here.
Thank you, Carla. So what we thought we would do here is pause before providing opportunity for the the property owner and architect to address the council and see if council members wanted to ask ask any questions right now, or alternatively, you could you could take their presentation, which I believe will be brief. And then come back to us with questions. So just turn that over to to Mayor Jordan for for your guidance.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions at this time? Not seeing anybody affirmative. I think we are clear to keep going. Thank you, Director Bond.
So bear with me. I'm going to bring up the property owner and the architect. I I think, and I think you're going to have to do this, Kava Massey and Leila Castrovie.
If you could go ahead and raise your hand, please.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to go ahead first? I think you'll need to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me? So sorry.
We can hear you now.
That's some technical. Okay, so I'm so sorry again. My name is Leila Castrovi and I'm the property owner. I want to thank the city council for taking time to consider this project. My husband and I purchased this property over sixteen years ago with the intention of developing. We're not newcomers to this community. We've as healthcare professionals in this area for almost twenty-five years and hope to continue to go with the approval of the project. Over the past decade, we have every angle of developing this property into something that would be of value to us functionally and professionally. The imposed parking requirements for initial attempt to build a medical building made the project economically unfeasible. Five years later, we're now back with a project that is designed to meet all the requirements and would work for us professionally and provide much-needed housing for the city of Albany. We are a part of this community. I just want to say, we have been. And all the concerns brought up in terms of safety are also our concerns. We would never build something that would not satisfy all the reasonable safety requirements of the neighborhood, including our own patients. So with that, I will turn it to Kava or Architect, Kava Massey.
Thanks. Hey Carla, can we get the set that is submitted? I have three minutes and thirty-three seconds. All right. Thank you so much. Who has control?
I do, which
You do, okay.
Yeah.
Can we go to the basement plan, please?
Sure. Sorry, it's moving a little slow for me here.
So as you heard, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council members. We've looked at the site from every angle. site from every angle. It's about 46 feet wide and 111 feet long. And the previous scheme, in essence, made it infeasible to build, given the hole we had to dig for the for the parking that went all the way to Solano. So just, and it's not easy to sort of perceive this as you're looking at the site either on in plan form or for real, you know, standing there. There's an eight-foot drop from the upper left-hand corner of the site to the lower right-hand corner. And that eight-foot retaining wall that has to be built for this entire site to be excavated was the huge straw that broke the back of the last set of budget. So we decided to actually only excavate half of the site to minimize that cost. And hence, this layout where the white area of the site is unexcavated. Next, please. Thank you so much, Carla. That's very nice of you to. So this, in essence, becomes the first floor, especially looking at the building from Solano. If you could go to that, actually, let's go through the plans really quickly. This is where the commercial space spaces are next. And the subsequent floors are all identical and they each have, there's three floors of housing with four units on each floor. So maybe we could just keep going. Can we look at the elevation, please? The Solano elevation? So I just want to point something out. So as you can see here, from Solano, this building is read as a four-story building. There's a commercial floor and then three floors of housing. And that's because on the left-hand side of the site, that's the highest portion of the of the site. And then if you go to the other side, the west elevation, which is on Ordway, a portion of the building is then constitutes the the extra floor, which technically, by code, it's called a basement. So four-story plus, was that sound for me? Did I go over the five? Anyway, the idea is to have a pretty simple building with enough flourish on it that will make it an interesting project and and sort of, there's, there's quite a few buildings of this size and scale up and down Solano. But not right at this intersection, of course. I'll be around for any questions you might have. So I think I better stop here and let the neighbors have the floor. Ooh, I had a minute left.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so with this, we go to questions from council members to staff and/or the architect from the applicant or the applicant.
That was funny, sir, too. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation and for keeping it brief. I'm anticipating this being a long meeting. This is for Director Bond and the city attorney. What happens as outlined in the staff report if we do not pass this? What sort of limitations are we on under given state law?
I can step in and take that question. In order to deny the concessions and waivers, the city council would have to make written findings supported by substantial evidence. These findings are very challenging to make intentionally so. If I step back a moment and as Director Bond has indicated, the goal of density bonus law is to incentivize the creation of affordable units. And the way to incentivize it under density bonus law is the law allows for an increase in density. It allows for concessions or incentives from the standard general plan requirements, specific plan requirements and zoning requirements, and it allows for waivers, unlimited waivers, as mentioned, to development standards. All of this is to, again, incentivize the production of affordable housing. And so in order to deny the project and functionally deny the concession that was requested and the waivers, the written findings specifically that would need to be made, again, with substantial evidence to support it, is that the concession would not result in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable housing costs. I want to be very clear that that finding is is has been updated. It was updated quite a while ago. It's not a finding that the commercial aspects of the project make the residential aspect financially feasible. That is not the finding that needs to be made. It's that the concession in this example, which is the reduction of 24 parking spaces, does not result in identifiable cost reductions. So that that would have to be made alternatively as well because there were three waivers that would were requested. We would also need to find that it was not necessary to avoid physically precluding construction of the development. And and that includes, you know, it's not just the residential components. Case law has been very clear that that includes amenities, whether it be the commercial aspects or the residential aspects of the development.
Thank you. And so those findings we'd have to make, those are very difficult to make. What, is there any possibility we could be able to make them if, you know, is that even feasible in any way?
I have not seen any evidence to to draft written findings that that would support a denial. As you see in the staff report, we are recommending approval. As in the pro formas that have been submitted as of today, even you will find parking listed as $45,000 a space. Do the math, 24 parking spaces totals over $1 million, which to me results in identifiable and actual cost reductions. So I don't know how we would counter that information. So again, it is intended to be challenging to deny these projects. The burden, I want to be very clear to, the burden is on the city to make that finding, not on the applicant to produce that information. And again, if if the council were to do so and were to be challenged in court and lose, then attorney's fees would need to be paid both to defend a lawsuit and to pay for the legal fees of the applicant's attorneys to, for the city not be successful.
And that was actually going to be my last question of just if that happens, then we are essentially opening ourselves to a quite costly lawsuit that based on case law and state law, we would almost certainly lose.
I think that's fair to say. The cases that come out have, you know, there's, there's a seminal case out of Berkeley, Wilmer versus Berkeley, that has been in support of Berkeley's decision to approve a mixed-use project. So these cases do include mixed-use projects as as the current application is. More recent case, Schreiber versus LA, also was in support of LA's approval. I personally have been involved in two East Bay cities who have approved projects that were density bonus projects that we have successfully defended with the applicant's team. So the courts kind of historically, whether it be density bonus law, Housing Accountability Act, are finding in favor of approval of these types of projects.
Great. Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Councilman Raquay or Nace?
I have no questions. I think that Vice Mayor Tiedemann asked the question. I guess I would have only one question for staff, and that would be about timing. We have various people have asked that we put off this hearing. But I understand there are limitations time-wise and how many hearings we can hold, as well as the fairly dramatic limitation of our ability to exercise discretion here.
I can start with this, and Molly, you might want to help me. But with respect to the meeting count, there is the Senate Bill 330, which I mentioned does put a limit of five meetings. We had a study session in January with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We also had a meeting in April where they made a recommendation to you. So this is at least the second meeting. That first meeting in January might be able to argue that that was preliminary application and didn't start that clock. But you know, we're somewhere between two and three meetings. We want to, we wanted to come into this meeting with a cushion in case the council wanted us to work on something and bring it back. With respect to the timeline, the law is, is the strict wording, the law says that we have 90 days after determination of sequoia determination, which has not yet been made. But I think it was the intent of state legislature that these applications be processed promptly. And it certainly, while we were happy to do whatever work the council asks us to do to to help you make the right decision, it's in our interest, both with this application and with other things that we have going on, to to bring this to a closure sooner rather than later.
And if I can just jump on to what Director Bond said, with the update of SB 330, when using a sequoia exemption, the permit streamlining act switched to 60 days. So the 90 days was expedited, which does dovetail into what Director Bond indicated of the desire to move expeditiously.
Councilman Raquay, do you have any questions?
I do. I have a whole lot of questions. I think what might make sense is to go through each subgroup and ask my questions and get answers and then move on to the next one, if that's, if that's okay with you.
Yes, please.
Okay, let's start with the base project. It appears originally, the project was eight studio units, which then somewhere along the way became eight one- or two-bedroom units. And I'm curious how it changed from studios to the one or two bedrooms and why the original plan isn't considered the base product to take the density bonus off of the studios so that we end up with 12 studio units. Also, along the same line, the parking had been, there had been some parking included in the original base product, and now that's gone. And I don't quite understand why. And same with the medical offices. They started out much smaller and have expanded quite a bit. And I'm a little confused about using density bonus for commercial property. Some things that I read today indicated that they, it had to, if I could read just real quickly.
If you don't mind, you're asking quite a series of questions. I staff may be jotting them down, but it might be better to to pause and let them address the three or four you've already asked.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that that does help me. With respect to the unit mix, there's, there is, a unit is a unit, whether it's a studio or four bedrooms. So that there may be a flaw in the state law, but it is the state law. And so the base project is kind of a hypothetical of what's, what can be accommodated. There is nothing that says, we would have to make the written findings, as the city attorney explained, that we would, that if we're restricting, say, the size of the commercial space, that that makes the project more feasible. And I think that would probably be challenging to do. So I think that answered your second question. And Mayor Jordan was right to pause because I've already forgotten your third question.
Well, I don't know which order they came in, but one question was parking was included in the in the by right project and then removed. Kind of speak to that.
Again, it that if we were to require them to add that parking back in, it would expand the the size of the basement, which is expensive construction, it would increase the cost of the project. And and I think it would be very difficult to make written findings that flip that around to say adding that basement space makes the project economically more feasible. It's a frustrating thing to have to tell you that because I know it seems like there's a switch or something going on, but the the standard that we're being held to is very high.
And then on the same, sort of the same track is the expansion of the medical offices.
Again, if we were to say, if the council were to give us direction this evening to reduce the size of the of the medical offices, we'd have to demonstrate that that makes the project economically more feasible than what they're proposing.
So can you address, talk a little bit about how state density bonus relates to both the commercial, how the commercial and the residential kind of tie together with the state density?
I can jump in on that, Jeff, if that's all right.
Please do.
Under under density bonus law, the definition of a housing development project is at least five residential units, and it includes mixed-use projects. So as I mentioned earlier, in the in some of the two seminal cases, they have been mixed-use projects. The LA case was retail on the ground floor and housing above, similar to this project. And so it is considered a housing development project for density bonus law. And so the commercial aspects of the of the project are factored in. And likewise, in the Berkeley case, they also had a commercial component and requested waivers for commercial space and including a 15-foot ceiling that was specific to the commercial space. So this has happened in the past and isn't as novel as may have been represented.
So I read something by a reputable law firm, not not yours, Molly, but another reputable one, that said the law requires cities provide a development bonus to commercial developers who partner with affordable housing developers for the construction of affordable housing on the commercial project site. That's not what we have here. We don't have an affordable housing project and we don't have affordable housing developers. It also goes on to say to be eligible for the development bonus, at least 30% of the housing units must be restricted to lower income residents, which we also don't have. So I'm a little bit confused as to why the density bonus applies the way you're applying it to the commercial.
I can't speak to, maybe you can send me what you're reading from in the citations. But but what I'm referring to and what you've heard from the staff report is strictly straight from government code section 65915. And this project falls squarely within the density bonus law.
Okay.
You may, I don't know if you're referring to, there was a provision under density bonus law that was sunsetted. So I don't know how old the statement is you're referring to or the provision, but this does quite fall within.
Okay, I think it was 2021.
I'm sorry, what was it?
I think it was in 2021. Also, I'll send it to you. Moving on. I'm also a bit perplexed with the sequoia exemption on projects consistent with the applicable general plan designation and general plan policies. It's, in my reading, it's clearly not. And I'm trying to figure out how you came to decide that it was. And let's just look at three policies, land use 2.1, 3.1, and 3.14, especially land use 3.1, where they're talking about the FAR for parcels, FAR of parcels 2.0 on Solano Avenue. And this is quite a bit above that. So how did you make that finding?
We can't. We can't. It, it's, it's clearly, I mean, just on the, the face of it, it's, it's not consistent, but that's where density bonus law comes in and says irrespective of those kinds of findings, we still have to allow the project. Now, we are consistent with some of the themes. It's, it's a, this is a zoning district that allows mixed use. We do have some policies that call for ground floor commercial on, on, in our commercial districts. So there are some policies that are consistent. If we were to attempt to deny the project based on those inconsistencies, I think we wouldn't be successful defending that because it's, we'd essentially be sidestepping the intent of, of density bonus law.
Were, did we do any traffic studies on this area? That's, that certainly is a concern of a lot of people we've heard from.
Have not done any traffic studies in terms of traditional traffic studies, traffic impact studies, or level of service analysis or anything like that. If, if the council were interested, we could provide some parking surveys. It's not relevant to your decision. You can't base a decision on parking, but that information could be provided to you if it, if it helps you. The, within the context of Sequoia, the criteria is will the, the people miles traveled in this area increase or decrease because of the project? And the, the analysis that, that the tool, analysis toolbox that has been developed by Alameda County Transportation Commission to help cities answer this question indicates there would be a decrease. In fact, because there's less parking or no parking provided as a part of the project, people are going to be less likely to drive.
Thank you. Regarding income levels, I believe it said on one of their applications, they were, they are planning to rent to the eighty percent AMI, which is, which is the high end of the low income. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay. And is there any criteria or timeline on how long the units must stay affordable? Is it in perpetuity? Is it thirty years?
Our, our inclusionary requirement, so there's, there's one unit that will be inclusionary subject to the city's requirements is in perpetuity. Forgive me, I'm not remembering off the top of my head whether there is a different timeline for the density bonus unit. It's, if there is, if it's anything other than perpetuity, it's probably fifty-five years is, in some cases, the standard. I'd have to.
Okay, just. Regarding setbacks, did I understand from the update that we received that there are no setbacks on either Solano or Ordway?
That, that was an error on our part, that in an earlier staff report that went to planning and zoning. There's a footnote in the planning and zoning code that we, we misread initially. Because this is a project that although it faces on to a residential street or a way, because the property across the street is also zoned Solano Commercial, that normal setback doesn't apply. So I apologize for that.
No worries. But is there any setback on to the, either the eastern side of the property or the southern side of the property?
No, in this case, there are no required setbacks.
Okay. And in one of the planning and zoning hearings, they discussed it was a fully electric building. I don't see that anywhere on here, and I know that's important to at least I believe that's important to the city. Is that still true that it's a fully electric building?
I have not, I don't, haven't asked that question since the Planning and Zoning Commission asked it a few weeks ago, so I assume it is. It will be something we would normally revisit at the time of the building permit application.
Okay, thank you. Also, I think that same meeting, the planning and zoning suggested or someone suggested that the property owner, the developer, reach out to the neighbors. And I'm, I'm just curious if that ever happened.
And to my knowledge, I'm not, I don't know that there has been direct contact between the owners and, and the neighbors. I did offer to meet, to facilitate a meeting due to schedule complexities. We weren't, this was about a week and a half ago, I think, maybe two weeks. Due to schedule complexities for, for both my schedule and others. It wasn't possible to pull that off. And frankly, I think, if I may be candid, I don't know that that would have been a productive discussion in my experience. I think there, I think having guidance from you this evening, if, if for some reason you want to continue this, we're not recommending that, but if you were to continue this and wanted us to help facilitate some discussion on a particular issue, be happy to do that. It's, it's hard to do that without knowing where you, the council are on a project in making the adaptive facilitation. So that hasn't happened yet.
Thank you. Just a couple more. It appears that there's a net loss of, of five mature trees in this project, several of which are really beautiful. I guess they're all beautiful, but several which are strikingly beautiful. You know, council has directed to have some of the measured D money put into increasing our urban forest with, you know, street trees and watering, just street trees. And so I'm just wondering how this, this project fits into that goal of the council.
Well, right now, we don't have any regulations in the planning and zoning code regarding tree protection on private property, with the exception on portions of Albany Hill. So there's, there's no regulatory authority for us to say you can't remove trees. We did include a condition of approval that we do biological surveys before a tree gets taken out. This is pretty standard, just to make sure there aren't any migratory bird nests that need to be preserved until the, the brist fledge. With respect to a street tree master plan, we are preparing, my office is preparing a request for proposals. Probably be bringing that to council in the coming months that would kick off what I expect to be a lengthy planning process to, to, to inventory and develop a public public street tree master plan. And the completion of that could very well end up with being some, some standards or requirements or guidelines, what have you regarding street trees. But at the moment, we're, we have a process that goes through Parks and Rec. And we would, we would continue to honor that where any street tree would go through our urban forester. And he would process that as he normally would with any other street tree application.
And what kind of medical building offices are these actually proposed? I've seen orthodontics, I've seen medical, I've seen dental. Is there a is there specific types in the plan?
I, I'd like to refer to Dr. Kasravi to explain her. I believe this is for her practice, so I'll turn it to her to respond to if you don't mind.
Okay, it's a, we, the practice of orthodontics.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you. And I guess my, just my very last question is, it looks like there's some unused space on the basement level. It just, I'm just curious what's going to happen with that, with that space. It, I, I got confused if the medical officer covers that over. That looked like where originally you had thought about excavating for parking and that wasn't going to work. So is the medical, is that where the medical is on that side? Or I, I didn't quite understand.
Wonder if it'd be helpful to bring up the level plan.
So this portion or is it on the first floor?
Right. I'm pointing at it. I'm sure you can see that.
Maybe you can give us a word. That's closest to where your question is.
Unexcavated? What goes there?
Okay.
Actually, if I may, please. The unexcavated is exactly what it says. It's basically just the slab for the, for the floor above to sit on. If you go to that sheet one A three point seven, which is a section through the site, I think it might explain it a little bit more clearly.
Okay, was, I don't know, do you have the sections in these?
Is that right?
No, this is the main package, so I presume the sections are further along.
Are they all the way at the bottom?
There's some basic three point seven, isn't it?
I think they're towards the end, Carla.
Okay, I'm just sorry. It's hard for me to
Yeah.
First year, three point, what was it?
That's the one.
Okay. So
Thanks.
That east west section is a slice through the building. And the portion that the medical one sits on is where that white unexcavated area is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's all my questions for right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Quaid. I guess that puts it to me. So for the, the city attorney.
Can I make a quick clarification?
Yes, certainly.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to say I, I Googled what the affordability term was for density bonus units. And Jeff was right, it appears to be fifty-five years, which is speaking from experience with affordable housing, that's fifty-five or sixty is about the standard, so that makes sense.
Thank you. Answers, answers in real time. Courtesy of this time we live in. So for the city attorney, in response to the vice mayor's opening question, you discussed a bit what happens if the city council doesn't approve. Obviously, it can be a suit whether it approves or it doesn't approve. If it doesn't approve and there's a suit and the, the conditions for not approving are not strong enough, then presumably the city would lose the case. Would the city be liable for damages as well or just for plaintiff's attorney's fees?
It really depends, Mayor, on how the lawsuit is pled. At a minimum, it would be attorney's fees, but there is a potential for damages.
Okay. As you, do you know of any precedence or do you have any guidance or thoughts on what kind of exposure we're talking about potentially? One, for the city to defend, whether wins or loses, and two, if it loses, how much would it be exposed for?
I, we're talking in the magnitude of hundreds of thousands of dollars minimum. Our, our fees to the city, if the city were to use us are reduced compared to typically developer fees. Attorneys that represent developers are probably at least double to three times as much. So I think you're, you're definitely looking if it was, if it was both defending and then potentially paying attorney's fees to the applicant's attorney, you're probably looking at close to four or five hundred thousand dollars is my guess.
Okay. The converse question, if if should the council determine to approve, I presume somebody could still sue the city. I mean, it goes both ways. So what's the scenario if the council approves and the city is sued?
Yes, you're correct, Mayor Jordan. It is common for a city to approve. As I mentioned, there were the two cases and then cases that we've personally represented. If the city were to approve this application and there was a lawsuit on the application, the applicant is required to defend and indemnify the city, so any legal cost would be borne by the applicant and not the city.
So you mentioned in your practice with other East Bay cities that you have been involved in defending an approval. Was that in your capacity contracted to those cities that made the approval?
Correct.
And so given that you participated, somebody paid you. I don't know, did the city pay you or did you get reimbursed? Or was, were your costs, the city reimbursed for your cost by the applicant?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Then questions raised about essentially the direction of subsidy from commercial to residential or residential to commercial. In other words, is the commercial making the residential more feasible or is residential making the commercial more feasible? Who has the obligation to, to make that determination?
That's not a determination to be made. So I, that's what I was trying to be really clear about. There, that is not a determination for the city to make. We have a project that's before us under a density bonus law. And what you have to do if you're not going to approve the concessions or not approve, I should say, one concession or approve the waiver is make certain findings, and it's not the finding that you just made about whether the commercial is supporting the residential or the residential is supporting the commercial. That's not in the law. The, the finding is on, at least on the concession, is whether that concession results in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for the affordable housing costs. So again, if the city were to deny that concession request, which was the twenty-four parking spaces, the city would have to have substantial evidence to support that those park, those parking spaces don't result in identifiable and actual cost reduction. So that's the finding that would have to be made on the concession. And in the waivers, it's, it's a different finding. And, and unfortunately, the case of the pertinent case law and the waivers is, is the Berkeley case I mentioned, and that that really makes it a big challenge on, on waivers to deny. And that is it's not, again, that it's needed for economic feasibility, but it's that the waiver will have the effect of physically precluding the construction of the development. And that development could include amenities. In the Berkeley case, the amenities included a courtyard. It included commercial height reductions for the, the height of the ceilings. So it, it's not just the residential, residential components.
Thank you. And, and just to confirm, I think I understand this, but it's a question that's been raised. So I think there's general understanding of the, the waiver of the residential and the parking that will be associated with the residences. Hard to understand that how housing state density bonus law, which regards housing and residences, covers the waiver for the commercial car parking. So I don't know if you could say a little bit more about that.
Think again, it's to incentivize the creation of the residential units. You, you heard the applicant previously, you know, what was brought before you was a commercial project. It did not include affordable housing in the past. What is now coming forward is a project with affordable housing, low income units, and that's, the incentives are to waive certain other zoning requirements or general plan and specific plan requirements. And so in, in this case, the project includes mixed use, which is the commercial component, which is permitted.
Thank you. In one of the, the messages we received was a, a statement, a question about some of the language in the State Department of Housing and Community Development memo. Specifically, local government may apply objective, quantifiable written development standards, conditions, and policies to the entirety of the mixed use project. The, the person wrote said they don't know what that means. What does that mean?
It means a lot of this subjective design criteria standards are no longer allowed to be applied. And I think Director Bond could have referenced that, that it, we have more control over a single family home than we do on these multifamily projects that are subject to the Housing Accountability Act. We really are required to apply objective standards that don't have discretion.
So maybe an example of an objective standard and a subjective standard would be helpful if.
Objective standard that I have routinely seen in the past is that the development is cohesive or matches the general development in the area. As opposed to an objective standard is the height of the project shall not exceed twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Very clear, it does, you know, someone can look and check a box that it does or does not meet that.
If, if I may, it's really intended to be either a yes, no, or a numerical standard that is strictly ministerial and, and not subject to any form of, of interpretation. Which is a very different kind of design review than what we normally do on other kinds of projects, where we talk about do the windows and the doors kind of match together and so forth. There, there's just none of that in, in an objective design review process. In other words, it's a designer view that I could understand as a scientist and an engineer. Even though I'm not an architect, okay? But there was a suggestion that the, the C contact, the Department of Housing and Community Development, which makes itself available for technical assistance regarding applications under density bonus law of the state, has, has staff done that by any chance on this circular project with regarding these questions of, you know, With regard to these questions of, you know, commercial, residential?
I have not contacted HCD on this application.
Okay, thank you. Um, you talked about the stormwater, uh, management requirements. One of the, I believe, sort of bright lines in that questionnaire, if I recall correctly, which I may well not. Um, is if the, I think it's divided the property of the hardscape increase is less than a certain number of square feet. Then, um, best management practice is stormwater features are not required. Do I have that right? And if so, what is, do you know what that number is off the top of your head?
I do, and it's pretty close here. It's, oh, well, Kava, I'll let Kava, he. He probably, I, I think I know what it is, but I bet he really knows what it is.
No, no, please.
I, I, the, the threshold in the, in the checklist that we use is five thousand square feet.
Okay.
And whether or not this is project is going to be above or below that, I'm not sure about.
It's, it's below.
Okay.
And is it five thousand foot increase in hardscape because the, this property already has some hardscape? Or is it just five thousand square feet, period?
It's, it's five thousand square feet, either an increase or some, I forget exactly the word that's used, or some substantial rehabilitation or something like that.
Okay.
So there is some, a modest amount of green space, um, on the roof and some of the, and small landscape areas. And, and as, as Kava said, I think that adds up to leave, um, less than five thousand square feet of the permeable surface.
Yeah. Thank you, um. As I mentioned, I listened to, uh, Mr. Chacy's concerns. Um, he is an owner or co-owner, I'm not sure which of the, the building that is immediately to the east. As we understand, east, west, north, and south in Albany, which is not actually aligned with those. And he is concerned about the, the loss of Bayview from the building. And he's concerned about the loss of sunlight, um, in association with potential solar PV. Project on the building. Uh, do either of those form a basis to, um, deny the project or deny approvals?
I, I'm very sympathetic to the implications of this project on his, his property, but no. They, they don't form a basis, a legal basis for, for denial of the, of the project.
All right. Can the city require this project to upgrade the intersection? That is right there.
The generic answer to any project anywhere in the city is, any, we can only require a new project pay its fair share. Um, which for any project, any particular intersection is going to be a very small slice of it. So, um, we don't right now have a plan for this particular intersection. We, we know as, as the council knows, and we talked about trying to resolve that. Um, so we don't have a plan to hand to anyone to go implement right now. And if we did, this project would contribute, you know, we could figure out a fair share with, of this project's contribution to the overall. Um, cost of the project, and it would be extremely small percentage. Um, so we, we, it, again, this is, um, Malick can help answer this question, but the Supreme Court rulings over the years have been very clear about. We, we can only ask the development project to pay a rational and proportional share of the, the cost of a, of site improvement.
So I'm, I'm sure it's way more complicated than this, but if you'll entertain a simpler question on this. Is the determination of fair share based on something like, again, it's more complicated this. Um, the number of trips the project might generate, car trips and other trips the project might generate relative to all trips in the city. Or all trips on Salano Avenue or something like that?
W- we're, we're now working on a fee study to update our fees, and it would be a fee per square foot. And that fee would be determined by kind of a high level analysis of the growth, you know, how many. How many people would be expected to live here, or how many people would be expected to, to be employed per square foot? Um, or how many square feet per employee, I should say. And, and that would be applied in a very high level calculation that would apply across different industries and so forth. So basically, what you would see is a dollar figure per square foot for new development.
That's okay, so on the residential side, it would be something like. If, uh, uh, an estimate that twenty people, there'll be twenty new residents divided by the twenty thousand people of the city. And therefore, that's the impact on our transportation infrastructure. Okay, thank you. I noticed that the, uh, two proposed affordable residences are both one bedroom. Which is not the mix of residences in the building. Do we have a basis, or do we have latitude to require that those affordable residences more closely match the mix of residents? The building, which to my mind would be one of the two bedroom residences. Um, we can discuss which one would be affordable and one of the one bedroom residences would be affordable.
Um, I, I have not addressed this question with the applicants. Um, as our normal process is, if the council were to approve this project, we would come back to you. With an affordable housing agreement for the council's consideration. And that would be normally the time that I would be a little bit more focused into exactly which unit and, and making sure that we're in compliance with the law. Um, our, our code, municipal code does have s- some language that in effect says that needs to represent the mix. The, the affordable units need to represent the mix of, of overall units, but we have not had that conversation. Um, and I would not consider the council's action on this project at this stage to be conclusive about that. Um, the, the conclusive decision on that would be with the affordable housing unit where we would. Identify exactly what that unit is, and there would be a, a restriction placed on that or portion of the project.
So, I, I'll check my understanding here, so. Um, what I hear, which may not be what you're saying, that's why I like to check it, uh, it's good relationship practice, um. Should the council choose to provide the three approvals tonight or at some future point? The city is not going to lose leverage over getting to designate which residences are actually affordable.
You, you certainly can express your, your perspective on this, and that would be reflected in an agreement that would come forward to you. Sometime relatively soon.
And if the applicant says no, it's going to be two of the one bedroom units, what, what happens?
I would consult with the city attorney, and I would assume that we would work that out and, and that we. You know, we're going to follow the law, um, and I think they would too, so I, I, I don't.
And generally, if I could add, if our code does provide, which is pretty standard with many cities. That the units need to be reflective of the units in the building, then, then that mix needs to match. So as Director Bond said, that's, that would be resolved and need to comply with our code, um, when those agreements came forward.
Okay, thank you. I noticed on the, the plans that. Portions of the exterior walls from the second to fourth floor actually exist over city property. That is, seems unusual to me. Um, I don't know what situation is with that. I don't see an agreement in front of us to. Go ahead and know, okay, the use of air rights or whatever the technical term is over city property. Uh, I don't know if staff, city attorney could.
Um, I have discussed this with the architect, um, you know, typically. Such things as bay windows or balconies or signs or sometimes some projections of various, of that nature. Can project over, um, in this particular case, the exterior walls on some of the, a few of the corners do project over the property line. I think we need to work through that. It, I don't know that that's complies with the building code. And, um, you know, we, this would normally be an issue that we would resolve at a building code phase of the project. But, um, I think again, if, if the council wants to, to, um, address that in, in any actions you take tonight. That can be reflected in the conditions of approval.
Do you have any? Well, I guess two aspects of this. Do you, do you have any recommendations from a planning perspective, whether we as the council should care about that or not? And then if we, if you think it's okay, which, you know, from a planning perspective is, is legitimate, I'm not the planner. Then I would turn to the city attorney and, and ask, does that create any legal exposure for the city if we go ahead and allow that?
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, I have two answers. One is we try to follow the, the building code, so if the building code doesn't allow it, that's the answer.
Oh, okay.
Having said, having said that, I don't think this is a substantive issue. It's, it's maybe just a few inches. And from an aesthetic or functional perspective, it doesn't impact the public right away. Um, and, and I'd like, I would at some point in this response give Kava an opportunity to address this as well. Um, so I, you know, I, I don't think it's a big deal, but we want to do it right. I guess this is my response, and, and Mayor Jordan, if we could give, um.
Yes, by all means, thank you.
Kava, please go ahead.
Yep, you're up.
Um, just very quickly, the building code allows one to go four feet. Up, up to four feet over the property line if you're so far up, off of the ground. In our case, we're only a few inches in two spots. And probably around two and a half feet on another that's kind of a wedge. Uh, it just happened to be the geometry of the, the building and the site with that curve in the corner. That sort of forced us into that, if you're, um, it, it, again, it, it complies with. What code, code allows, if you have an issue, we can relocate it.
Yeah, like I say, I don't, I don't have an issue personally or perspective at this time, other than wanting to understand. No, is it desirable to allow, is it legal to allow? If we allow it, do we create exposure for the city? So that, that's my concern, um. Mainly, so thank you. Uh, and with that, um. I do have some questions for yourself, for the applicant, I'm not sure which, and, uh. First, I want to thank you for making some of the adjustments that the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, discussed and recommended. Um, and just to be specific about that, uh, you made the residential lobby height, um, potentially double story or from the basement up through the first. Floor, uh, making a, a more welcoming space to enter into. I appreciate that. Um, you made the exterior wall of the residential entry transparent. Again, providing a more welcoming environment for people to come and go through. And you moved the bikermentu door back away from the exterior door. So it'd be easier for people to navigate through both those doors without having to hold both of them open at once, essentially. Uh, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission suggested substituting. The back medical office with two of the residences from the fourth floor that occupy essentially that same footprint. Um, in order to step down the building to the south. And so I'm, I'm curious to hear you talk about that possibility. You know, my understanding is the primary goal is to have the, the space for the orthodontia, um, practice. And so this would be a second medical suite. I don't know what kind of revenue, I guess we're not allowed to really get into that, but. Uh, you know, that, that is something I think that would be of interest and go, go a little ways towards meeting, uh, the community input. That we have received.
Yeah, I think it, it really is, uh, the owner's, um, call. Uh, because, you know, as far as an architectural sort of point of view is concerned. Um, we can, we can make a lot of different things work. It's just that when the entire, um, medical portion of the project is only around. Under fifteen hundred square feet, the administrative side of the practice is going to basically take over that. Space and not much left to, to really practice it. And that's, that's what, um, Leila, um, and, and we have discussed. Would you like to add anything else, Leila, in the?
Well, maybe I could jump in real quick, because I think you might have just provided me some insight, which is, I, I had him. My layperson's envisioning of this, that each medical suite, if you will, was going to be an independent practice. But are you saying that the, the suite in the back is essentially the back office for the suite in the front, and that's sort of the plan?
Um, it's, it's, it's at this moment, given that there isn't a, a, a big plan for. And I, I want to, at least, I don't know of a, of a plan for how it's going to work, um. Some, a big portion of the practice is usually administrative and, and so on. So maybe later you can shed some light on that.
Yes, unfortunately, you know, the, the size, this is bare minimum that we would need. Besides administration, we also have an in-house lab, you know, where we make retainers. So this is, um, this is, this, this is all we need, unfortunately.
Yeah, I, I, I got it. Like I said, I didn't realize that the disease were. Um, envisioned as serving a single practice, so I appreciate. I think that's valuable, so, no, I, I had in mind that the, the front. Um, suite would be occupied by the owners of the building, um, owners of the property, and the back suite would be leased out to a different practice, so. Thank you, um. I noticed that there's only one window proposed in many of the bedrooms. And not a particularly wide window at that, which concerns me for them feeling somewhat closed in and dark. Others of the bedrooms have, you know, two windows essentially side by side, or whatever the technical term would be for that. Um, so, uh, I'm wondering if you could. Explore that issue a little bit.
Yeah, it actually is, um. Something that, you know, I admire in older buildings. Because the floor to floor height of buildings were taller, the windows had much more of an elegant sort of proportions. And now things are a little bit more square and, uh, not as, not as nice. So one of the tricks I've learned to use is to actually drop that window down to the floor. And if you know, if you turn that same window and turn it horizontally, it's going to feel like plenty of light. And I think that, that's really, because it's, it's, it's almost eight feet tall.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, uh, three feet wide, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's just one way to make the thing look a little nicer.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, um. The planning and zoning suggests increasing the, the minimum dimension of balconies so that they, uh, qualify as private open space, which. My understanding is I think that would have to go from the three feet, six inches on the current plan to four feet. Um, projecting from the building, um, I don't know if I have that correct. You probably know those regulations, and I'm sure staff does.
Yeah, essentially even more than that. And one, one of the reasons I was keeping the, the balconies the size I had originally drawn them out. Was not to allow people to move stuff out onto them. I've generally, um, tried away from putting balconies on the exterior of buildings. Just because all kinds of stuff gets dragged out there, either to store it or to just kind of keep it out there. And then it's a little messy.
Yeah.
Few years.
Not, not great aesthetically.
Right, yeah.
Thanks for sharing your thinking on that, um. The bedroom, bedroom one on the, uh, front two bedroom. Residents on the fourth floor, and, uh, maybe that, that, um, plan for the fourth floor could be brought up. If possible. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, so fourth floor.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, the, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, so that, that bedroom one. Which is essentially a master bedroom. I'm, I'm having trouble seeing how you put a queen size bed in there. That doesn't end up blocking a door or blocking the whole room.
Absolutely right. Uh, that, that, uh, closet that was put into bedroom two is what, uh. Impinges on that room, for sure.
Yeah, so if that closet moves into bedroom two and or bedroom two as a whole slides down. You know, to the corner or something like that.
Right.
You can solve that, but I think it needs to be.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for, for catching that.
Yeah.
And, and would have eventually somebody, uh, but thank you for doing it now. Much better, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, um. Little value add there. little value add there. Albany City Council to you. Um, if you could go, I'm sorry, I I should, I was trying to catch you. If you could show us the first floor plan.
Sure.
Yeah, so the, I see the uh, the courtyard that's on what I think most Albanians would call the east side. Um, I think you might be calling the north side and it's really fifty fifty in reality. Um, has a door to it off the circulation lounge. I don't see how the courtyard that is at the I'm gonna call it southern corner, southwestern corner. How that, is there access to that for maintenance, for use, for?
Well, that, that that door was put there to allow for for some maintenance of the courtyard, cleaning of the windows and so on.
Right, right. I'm just saying that the the hundred and twenty eight square foot courtyard doesn't have a door to it.
Uh, there's actually a door on the lower left-hand corner of the, of the courtyard, opening.
Isn't that, that's like over the drop-off down to the tree of ground level, right?
Oh, you're you're pointing to the one on the south.
Yeah.
Ah, um. You are absolutely right.
Okay.
Maybe the, yes, definitely a door is needed.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for catching that too.
Sure. All right, and thank you for sharing that. We can go back to full panel view. That was a lot of questions. Thank you for bearing with me. Um, as you know, I'm the detailed person, uh. So I I appreciate your forbearance for those questions. Um, with that, unless there's any other questions from council. Not seeing any other questions. Now would be the time for public comment. Um, I asked that people be respectful to other commenters. And I'm going to look and see how many people raise their hand. If you raise your hand now. And if you are on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine, if I recall correctly. Don't have that in front of me. Um, I'm currently seeing thirteen, fifteen, sixteen. So at three minutes apiece, I'm gonna presume some people haven't raised their hand because I don't know how that goes. Um. That'll be an hour of public comment. If everybody takes their three minutes, um, this is obviously very important to the community. Um, so I am not inclined to reduce the time because I also observed that as comment goes on. Um, some commenters kindly keep their comments to a shorter period than their full three minutes, recognizing that some of what they were going to say has already been said. So I will, I will leave it at three minutes per speaker because I know there's some who you don't have a lot of, lot of, um, put a lot of work into it. Uh, but I encourage those who are agreeing with previous speakers to indicate as much, um, and not use your three minutes and the, the earlier council can come back to deliberation, the better our deliberations are going to be in terms of our mental capacity. So with that, city clerk, if you please admit the first member of the public. Welcome. You are on mute. And you're still on mute. If you're on your phone, it's star six, I believe. And we still cannot hear you. Welcome.
Um, hi, my name is Brian Martin and I uh, am a resident of on Adam Street just behind businesses on San Pablo Avenue. I appreciate the city making this a separate meeting um, uh, for this uh, property on Solano. Uh, people who are coming into this for the first time with state density bonus law uh, may benefit from the new San Pablo Avenue who've been seeing the uh, bowling alley project um, go through. And uh, just know that this is uh, this is part of the process that um, the bowling alley project, for example, is going to have over two hundred units and fewer parking spaces than there are units. Dozens of spaces without units, and even the spaces that are there will cost cost the residents money. So who knows if any of them will even get used. So we're anticipating, you know, hundreds of cars on the street, um, parked, parked on the street. And uh, and the city is encouraging thousands more units on that one street alone on 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 San Pablo Avenue. So in fact, they're en- encouraging, uh, the city is encouraging eight-unit developments directly behind adjacent to my house, um, and with zero parking spaces as a, as a no parking spaces required. So this is to see twelve units, um, and uh, and that it stores or depending on how you count. Um, you know, that's, you know, residents should be aware that that uh, you know, that there's, there's shit coming me and in the state and uh, there is a there's also an important requirement the city has, the eight-year cycle to develop a uh, a housing plan. Housing elements and the planning has been seen that. That's the city's to and so the city can't just dump all the high-density housing neighborhood like on San Pablo Avenue. The city has to spread it out. The city only showed in public meeting that residents and the least white residents live along San Pablo. The burden, um, lots of benefits to dense for businesses, having more customers to all sorts of things. There are benefits, but there are are negative impacts. Uh, and so that's what I'm focusing on right now. Um, and so if the city were to uh, deny uh, more dense housing with limited parking along Solano or other parts of the city, that could also uh, um, uh, legal issues, I would think with the city or or reject its housing element, uh, the the state may uh, come down on the state, a city that way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, hi, Nick Peterson. I'm a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition and also a longtime resident in Albany on Peralta Ave. Um, change is coming and it needs to come fast. Um, we need more housing. We need um, active transportation-based housing. We need to change and Albany is sort of a more suburban uh, type design layout with little single-family homes all over. And we have two major um, arterial roads that are probably wide enough that could support the higher housing density. Um, I I support this project, although I'm very sympathetic to people nearby, especially the adjacent neighbors where that's going to be a big change, but other changes are happening in our world too. And we need to learn to provide more housing uh, close to where it's convenient to walk and bike. And that's, that's why I support this. I would like to see a bit more bike storage in the project because people will really rely on that. I know a lot of people are going to the cargo bikes just two spaces. Doesn't seem good enough. There should be a cargo space, a cargo bike space per unit. Um, and then a couple other bike spaces uh, storage provided. So I I strongly encourage designer, try to work that in. I know it's a challenge, especially with that basement level being constrained. Um, but it's happening. You see it. People are taking their kids in electrified bikes. That make it very easy. They're buying those bikes, which are quite expensive instead of a car and it's saving them money and it is not polluting. I I've done all my commuting around Albany on a bike. I've reduced the number of cars. I have people on my street that own five cars and park them all over the place near me. And those days have to end. Um, having three, four cars. We need to average it out. So having some places where people opt not to have a car is good. I also encourage, I think there's a good opportunity here for the city to investigate uh, parking permit process. I mean, the the whole parking thing comes up again and again, and people talk about hundreds of cars flooding their neighborhood. Um, which as we move to a different paradigm is a real legitimate concern. People need to understand they can't get a car and just park it all over the place. And the only way to control that is to have some sort of permit process. And I encourage the city not only with the previously, uh, previous caller mentioned, the um, Albany Bowl project. But maybe also with this project, although it's only twelve units. But to have some sort of um, pilot study or pilot project with parking permits for the neighbors that then are not available to people that would live in this building. So it's very clear that um, there, you know, if they want to park, they have to park fairly far away and that would be more incentive not to have a car itself. There's car sharing abilities this encourages. Putting the pain on having, not being able to have a car, that is painful, but then there are other alternatives. And if those alternatives become more available and more in demand, they'll happen. So this is all part of shifting from a very poor planning process that we exercised in the past to one that's being forced on us by our state. So I I encourage you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, Albany council members. Hello, my name's Andrew Tang. I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Albany. As we all know, the Bay area is experiencing a housing crisis. Thousands of people are being forced to have homes because they can't afford to keep a roof over their head. Workers are having to drive in from Fairfield and Tracy to service those of us who are lucky enough to live here in Albany. Our children are are growing up and they can't afford to live here anymore and they're leaving. Um, I fervently hope that Albany would be part of the solution to this problem and not one of the problems that's causing this problem. So with that, I would strongly encourage the Albany City Council to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Dwayne Silverstein. I am a thirty-eight-year resident of Ventura Avenue. Uh, I am not against uh, residential development Albany. I am not against residential development on uh, sixteen hundred Solano. I am against the conditional use permit for medical offices due to parking and other reasons. And I come to this hearing wearing three hats. First, for, as I said, for thirty-eight years, I've been a homeowner here. My own car is electric. It is powered indirectly by solar panels on my roof. I only drive it five hundred miles a a year. So I'm not a big rah rah Sisbumbah car person, but nonetheless, we live in the real world and it has been very difficult for visitors to find parking on Ventura Avenue. When I did a random check the last two days during business hours, there were no, and I repeat, not a single parking space available on Ventura. As it is now, if a plumber comes, they have to double park. I have to take the risk for uh, you know, getting a ticket that they might have. Um, second hat I wear is I'm director of a business on Solano Avenue just across uh, from the sixteen hundred Solano Avenue proposed development. Half my staff, as I do, walk or bike to work, but the other half can't afford to live close by. So uh, they have to drive. It's been very hard for them to find parking spaces. With this development, it'll be much, much harder. And more to the point, eighty percent of our visitors drive cars and that's going to hurt our, our business. Third hat I'm wearing is director of an international conservation organization uh, which has received dozens of honors for being twice uh, honored by the Albany City Council, for which thank you, to being nominated for the Nobel Peace Prize. And I can tell you from experience, by forcing people, trying to force people to drive by not giving parking space just never works. It is naive to think that many of the apartment owners, renters won't have cars to park on the street, as it is naive to think that parents will take their kids for orthodontic treat treatment on a bicycle built for two. Ridiculous. Um, this uh, hearing has given me a bad sense of deja vu, being a long-term Albany resident to when Albany debated whether there should be a card room at the racetrack. And we heard horror stories after horror stories. If we don't pass this, the town's gonna go uh, broke. It's gonna fold up. It's gonna die. And I'm hearing the same CYA type of arguments right now. Uh, to me, even if the attorney, and thank you for your work, Attorney City Attorney, even if she is right and it costs us four hundred thousand dollars, that's a price well paid to preserve the quality of life in Albany. And uh, I urge you not to prove the conditional use permit for the medical offices at sixteen hundred Solano. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, my name's Howard Graves. I'm a long-term Albany resident and a former, a retired emergency room physician. Uh, it's disturbing to me that the uh, developers and the Planning and Zoning uh, council have studiously avoided talking about the uh, public health and safety hazard pro- uh, 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 that this project will cause. Uh, this intersection is one of the most dangerous intersections on all of Solano Avenue. It was recognized as such in the two thousand nineteen Solano Complete Streets program. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, counselors uh, agreed that this was a dangerous intersection, but they said that wasn't their duty to make a decision on the public health and safety. So this public health and safety now falls on you, on the city council uh, to make this decision and it will affect children and seniors and people who can be, who can and will be injured at this intersection. Uh, it, uh, this, this project, because it's so oversized, we'll have a very busy orthodontic clinic, is going to dramatically increase traffic and foot traffic at this intersection. Uh, and the developers noted that they didn't include a traffic or safety study as part of their a- application, claiming CEQA exemption. It turns out, however, the adverse impacts on public health and safety is a special condition. Not specifically covered by CEQA and the city council has authority uh, uh, has the uh, authority to intercede uh, and to uh, 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 add a special condition of project approval called off-site mitigation. Uh, the, the cost of these mitigations is typically shared by the city and the developer. I strongly urge the city council to defer decision today and to refer the off-site improvements necessary for this dangerous intersection to handle this uh, dramatically increased uh, sized project and foot traffic to the Traffic and Safety Commission for their recommendations. I'm sure they're gonna recommend uh, a four-way stoplight, the cost of which uh, is close, close to a million dollars for this kind of area. Finally, I want to say that the failure of the Planning and Zoning Staff and Commission to notify the whole city about this uh, uh, Solano-changing, transforming project is a shame. I bring shame on the city and it violates the public trust. The city council needs to adopt uh, notification rules on meeting on uh, uh, changes of this magnitude that notify the whole city, not just a few dozen neighbors who live within three hundred feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Um, thank you very much. My name's David Greenselder. I've been a developer and an urban planner and economist for over thirty years. I'm not going to address points that I've already put in writing to council. I'm the one who prepared the financial analysis you may have seen, to which the city attorney referred. I'm not sure I agree with her analysis. I'm not sure I necessarily disagree. But for example, I note that the removal of the commercial space eliminates the cost savings of the parking. So if the commercial space were to be removed, there would be no financial cost savings. I also think I heard Jeff say that if council were to reduce the size of the medical office, they would have to demonstrate that the project would become economically more feasible for the residential and affordable than what is being proposed. And that finding can definitely be made with a financial analysis already provided. My experience is that offsites, and I've developed hundreds of projects in my career, a routine, offsite costs are routinely imposed on the triggering project and not just a prorate share. And I I I wish that it had only been a prorate share over time. In any event, um, I I'm asking for a continuance and for two reasons. The first is I'd like the opportunity to, to look again at the financial analysis with the information that I've now heard from this evening's meeting. I and I don't want to do that on the fly. I just couldn't do it as I was listening to all of your comments and, and feel comfortable it was done well. Also, I want to point out that neither uh, and I believe I'm speaking on behalf of um, fellow neighbors, we're not opposed to the project. Um, in fact, I've been actively involved with affordable housing for nearly twenty years. So I'm really sensitive to this issue. Um, but I think neighbors want to engage with the applicant. So a continuance to allow for So a continuance to allow for further financial analysis and perhaps with the instruction to the applicant to thoughtfully engage with and consider neighbor concerns would enable a constructive meeting between the applicant and neighbors, as Jeff suggested earlier, and, and would be a constructive thing for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. You are still muted. If you're on your phone, I believe it's star nine. We cannot hear you yet, unfortunately. Welcome.
Yes, I didn't realize I was on. This is Dr. Stephen Albert. I'm a Berkeley resident. I live two blocks from the proposed project. I spent the better part of four afternoons distributing a pamphlet, which you've probably seen. And not one of the over two dozen Berkeley Albany residents that I spoke with, who was even aware of this issue. So I want to provide for the entire audience here, when did you alert Albany city residents of this and by what means? I'd like an answer.
We will answer questions after comment period is over.
All right. Additional time, please. I'd like to disagree strongly with the architect that this building is the same size and scale as others on Solano. Please provide some evidence of that. This is a new boxy building, completely out of character with the craftsman low-scale style of the vast majority of buildings and structures on Solano. Absolutely disagree with that statement. I will relinquish my time. However, I will say that I will be supporting lawsuits against this project financially. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Karen Laisma and I have lived here and owned a house here for 57 years. And I am very, very distraught over this project. I have been involved in giving my input for the last 10 years and I it started out with a two-story building, I believe, with 26 parking spaces. Now there's a third and now there are four stories actually. And I would like very much to have the council consider eliminating the medical offices and just since, since we are in such dire need of housing to just have apartments in that building and reduce it. I don't know why there, there was added four more apartments, which caused an extra storage to be added in the last couple of years or three. I have a question about garbage cans for not only the medical office, but for 12 units. I don't see any space for garbage cans and they take up a lot of space because there are three of them for each of us here on, on the street. So that is a question I'd like to have answered after we're done here. Now, Otway is going to be cluttered and literally closed for at least a year and a half, which makes it almost a dead-end street up at, at the corner of, up at the intersection of Solano and Otway. And I would like to propose that possibly we could make it a legal dead-end street up there. That would eliminate a lot of the problems with dangerous traffic and so on. It almost takes four minutes for me to get into Solano Avenue from, from my street. And I'm also logged in very much on Marin, so there's so much traffic already in those two parallel streets. And so we basically have about in, in one block here on Solano, we almost have 20 businesses, who, small businesses, including the animal hospital at the corner of Paralitans and Solano, and they are already parking on our street. And I, I cannot see how the city council could possibly allow only two parking spaces for such, for such a huge project.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, city clerk. I was trying to take notes. Lost track of the clock. Welcome. You are, yes. Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So a few things. I'm a business owner along Solano Avenue. We service a lot of elderly clients doing medical-type massage work for, for those elderly clients. I find that this type of project is somewhat discriminatory towards elderly, the elderly. We've also talked about the children being an issue as well because they're not going to be coming to their appointments by a bicycle. They've been told by their physicians to not, you know, to lessen the potential for falling. So one, I think, active-based transportation is just not feasible for, for all types of individuals. The other thing I would like to point out is I don't see any bike parking for the patients because the planning is, keeps talking about, you know, they want everybody on bikes now, but where would the patients park their bikes if that's the case? I want to point out that Solano Avenue, and it's just not going away, is a destination shopping avenue. We've got clients that come from Walnut Creek. We got Danville, San Francisco, Marin, Novato, Martinez, Pinole, Richmond, and there is no public transportation. Our clients are not going to be coming on their bicycles from Marin. It's just impractical. And we really need to be thinking logically and not just be jumping to conclusions that because this state bill, you know, ties our hands that, or we just, we've got to be practical about how we, we plan these projects. And if the owner would like to tell all their, their renters and their patients to not come and not have cars, maybe that would solve the problem. Is, is the applicant or the property owner willing to tell all their patients and their, their renters to not have cars or occupy cars to use and enter their building? That's a question for them.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. This is Nick Pritchett. I'm chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, speaking for myself, but also generally representing the deliberation of the commission to some extent as well. To that end, I will note that a supermajority of the commission voted for and support this project. I'm calling in in support as well. Director Bond noted that state laws have changed, but seemed somewhat conciliatory about these laws. He said that state laws intended to limit discretion in many projects. However, he did not also state that the reason for this is that state laws intended to encourage housing production and affordable housing production. And there is widespread agreement that we are in a housing crisis. And there is widespread agreement that cities refusing to allow housing to be built are a big part of this problem and thus the laws exist. This is why these laws exist. The project is only four stories. This is a modest project. To either side of us in Berkeley and El Cerrito, projects of this size or larger are routinely being permitted and built. Multi-story buildings surround this parcel and this building is not out of scale with the neighborhood and the very wide street. And in fact, I believe it will serve to revitalize this section of Solano from there to the east, which is a sleepier portion of the avenue. Residents there will be able to walk down and visit the wonderful small businesses, businesses on Solano to the east and west of the project. Multiple members of the commission have made similar comments as well. If we believe parking is or will become a problem, well-known parking management solutions such as meters and residential parking permits can be used. This intersection in front of the project may need improvement, but this not is, is not relevant to the project. Are we to not allow any building around this intersection until it's changed? I don't think so. And it would be great if this building were all electric, but it is not Albany code until you, the city council, require all-electric building. And although no one likes the removal of mature trees, there is again no code against tree removal on private property. And trees luckily can be replanted and grow to maturity again. I believe the reaction against this project is out of proportion with this project. As the council knows, you have approved, you have approved a six-story project on San Pablo Avenue not long ago. Accommodating, accommodating our share of housing by building dense infill housing along transit corridors is what is happening all around us and is wholly appropriate in Albany as well. You risk intervention by the state and possibly other lawsuits if you deny this project. This project conforms with the combination of state and local laws imposed upon it. You should approve this project as it is a good project. And I ask that you not see to the threats of some of those who have written and spoken because if you approve, as you, because on approval, you already face significant, because, excuse me, because you already face significant risk if you deny this project. That is not a reason to deny. So thank you very much for hearing my comments. And once again, I speak in strong support of this project.
Thank you. Welcome. You're still on mute. On a phone, you can press star nine. You're off mute now, but we cannot hear you. You might have some other part of your system on mute other than Zoom. We will come back to you. Welcome.
There, unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Julie Ballard. I'm a long-term resident of Albany. I'm a, I'm a retired physician. And I have, I agree with, with many things that have been said, raising issues about this. And I would like to speak to just two of them. One of them is I'm really concerned about safety on the street. If, if this project is going to be an orthodontic office, most of the customers will be, most of the clients and patients will be children. I have three kids who have had orthodontic work myself. And sometimes they go in every two weeks or every four weeks for adjustments. Those kids are, most of them are going to be accompanied and most of them are going to be dropped off. And if there is no available parking, they will be dropped off by parents who are double parking to let them scamper across the street. And I'm really worried about that. The other, the other things, there are other, a lot of other traffic issues that will be raised by this particular structure, this particular use. There's double parking. There's, there's circling of parents around and around the block. I know that many people come down the block looking for parking and do a three-point turn in my driveway because it's about three doors in from, from Solano Avenue. They do have done so frequently that they've actually broken up the paving next to my, next to my driveway. It had to be redone with cement. And so people seeking parking will be doing extra driving in that vicinity. I, I think that this, I, I really urge that the final consideration of this project's approval be delayed long enough for the council to consult its own transportation committee, transportation and safety committee to consider what will really happen at this, this intersection. I would like to say I am in favor of the residential. I think the writing is on the wall and residential places without parking are in, in our future. And some of the arguments in favor of them, I think, are very valid. But having this really large medical facility is going to cause a tremendous change in, in traffic patterns and pedestrian patterns on the corner. You should get a, a, a expert consultation with your own transportation committee and find out what's really going to be needed there and, and, and have it implemented before this building project creates the problems. So I urge you to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, is that it seems to me that the, that the owners have made virtually no concessions of their own to the concerns of the neighborhood, the traffic in the city. And the threat of a lawsuit is, is which I'm not saying they have made that, but the implication is that, that the lawsuit is kind of in their approach to the fact that there's a lot of resistance. They have asked for, on the other hand, the they have maxed out all the concessions that they've asked for. They, they, and they're eliminating almost 30 parking spaces.
Thank you very, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Randall Morrison. I live on Tularia Avenue. I submitted a letter on May 24th, raising a concern about consistency with the general plan. And I was very impressed tonight with the presentations by Mr. Bond and this super meaning about the impact of state law on your deliberations. And I understand the limitations on your discretion. But I think there's an overarching question here of, does this new state law, is it a kind of hypersonic missile which negates the general plan? I don't think so. And as I read the, the report of the planning commission, the resolution that they passed, they acknowledged that the general plan requirements are in effect and they made an argument about why those general plan requirements were fulfilled. Specifically, the general plan requirement that the development will result in improvements that are visually and functionally appropriate to their site conditions and harmonious with their surroundings. And the commission said that they found the project would generally be in a scale and harmony with existing development. And the commissioner who spoke just a moment ago made similar statements. I strongly disagree with that. I don't think it's possible to, to expect the city council just rubber stamp the planning commission's approval. Somebody should go stand on that corner and look and see what a 60-foot building looks like in relation to the neighboring properties. And for the commissioner who just spoke to say, oh, go down on San Pablo and you'll see all kinds of buildings like that. It's true. If you go up to El Cerrito, you will. And if the city council inclined to approve this project for San Pablo, that's fine. But right now, we're talking about preserving the main street character of Solano. And unless the state density bonus law somehow preempts the general plan requirements, I think the city council can say the general plan requirements have to be satisfied first. And then you look at the state bonus law and then you look at the CEQA guidelines. Because the CEQA guidelines themselves with this categorical exemption say that condition A says for the categorical exemption to apply, the project has to be consistent with general plan designations and policies. Well, this plan, this project doesn't meet that requirement. So unless I'm misunderstanding the relationship of the general plan to the density bonus law and the CEQA conditions, I think you still have authority and discretion to deny this project based on general plan non-conformity. And I look forward to hearing some more from the city attorney and from Mr. Bond, the director, when you get around to answering these points. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I spent some time actually during the meeting, reading the incredible volume, incredible number of comments. It, it's amazing, remarkable how much angst a four-story building on Solano is, is, is creating. The city has been involved the last year plus on, on a San Pablo, so-called San Pablo Vision Plan process, which contemplates eight-story buildings by rights. So base projects of eight stories on, on San Pablo Avenue. And there's been myself being an exception, been very little public comment. But I, I wrote a letter. I, I am concerned about the application of state density boats concessions, law concessions for, for parking. The staff and the city attorney have taken a very simple-minded approach. They've lumped, that they've lumped all the parking concessions together for a total of 24, but, but I think it's, it's helpful to separate those. So there's, there's 12 units, a 12 unit concession, a 12 parking unit concession for residential parking, which is clearly contemplated, but contemplated by state density bonus law. I, I think the, the concession for commercial is, is, I think, very problematic. And I don't think the city attorneys or the staff's analysis has been very complete. I, I would like, I would like staff I would like, I would like staff to ask, or the council to ask the attorney, is she or staff aware of any other jurisdiction that has applied the state density bonus parking concessions to commercial parking? Maybe this has already been answered. Absent that, I would suggest my proposal and letter that we consult with the state, their agency, Community Housing Development, and see if we can get an answer to that. And then finally, Peggy mentioned the section of the state density bonus laws that related to commercial projects that were partnering with the housing unit. And the city attorney correctly responded that that was sunsetted. It was sunsetted January 1st of this year. So it's much more recent than Womer versus Berkeley, which is the only case law that she seems to be able to cite in defending any of this. And I think it still goes to the intent of the legislature, the fact that they had a separate area of the state density bonus law applicable to commercial. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so, good evening. I'm Robert Chastey. My wife and I own the building next door to sixteen hundred. And we will be the most impacted. I just wanted to raise a couple of points. First, it's impossible, it's impossible that the proponents of this project can claim that they would be greatly deprived in terms of their use of the commercial space if they don't get the three thousand roughly square feet for the orthodontic office. Their initial application only had about eight hundred square feet of commercial space. What were they thinking? That was the application. So it's hard to imagine that they would apply for an eight hundred square foot commercial space and now say that not getting the full three thousand or twenty-seven hundred and fifty square feet would be a great detriment to them. So the idea that was raised at the Planning and Zoning Commission that perhaps the two of the units could be brought down to the ground level and take over that space seemed a very reasonable accommodation. And I understand that the applicant wants what the applicant wants. And I have to second whoever it was earlier who said that the applicants made no movement to concede anything and has taken every possible concession and every possible waiver and requested that of the city and of the public, including now turns out that some of the property is hanging over public property. They're not even maintaining their project within the limits of the actual footprint of the five thousand one hundred and twenty-one square feet of the property lines itself. Wanted to mention a couple of things. First, I believe and endorse the idea that this would be good to continue this. This is a momentous decision, and it's going to change things dramatically along Solano. It's going to change the character. It's going to change a lot of the way and look and the feel of the town. And I think that involving more of the public in this, certainly if nothing else to educate them as to the need that we have to adapt, is a good thing to do. I'm not against having housing there, nor was I against the proposal a couple of years back of putting in the two-story of orthodontic offices. The reason that they're not done and the reason why the architect says that this is a difficult project, it's not a difficult project. They're just trying to do too much on a five thousand square foot lot. The problem they have is they're trying to pour five gallons of water into a three-gallon bucket. It's not hard at all if they just would restrict themselves to the three gallons of water. So I would urge that you continue this hearing to allow, you're only in number two. You have five hearings to complete this process. It would be a good thing to do. And removing the commercial space is absolutely essential here. It would solve all the problems and it would reduce the cost of this, according to the pro forma done by Greensfelder. I know I'm out of time, but thank you for allowing me to speak. I had submitted a letter.
Certainly. It's our constitution that allows you to speak. I would want to claim credit for that. Welcome.
Hi, sorry I missed you earlier. The battery in my mouse died right when my turn came up. I couldn't believe it.
Welcome to the last two and a half years.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Okay, I'm an owner of a property, two doors from this project, right next to the wine shop, which I think we're all going to need. That wine shop, I'm thinking of opening an account for me and my tenants. I have two retail tenants and two house tenants, all of whom rely on parking. So this is a great concern to all of us. The retail tenant, the residential tenants, of course, if they come home from work before five-thirty, they have to find parking on side streets. So they're working in communion with neighbors on the side streets. And those neighbors surely know, have been doing this for years. One of my tenants has been there more than twenty-three years, so has been doing this. So parking is at a premium there. And with the parklets now, it's even more at a premium. And if you don't believe me, you go try to find a place to park for the night, anytime you want to try and see what you can find. Okay, so I have to say I'm sick about this potential development. I'm just sick about it. I came here when I was first married to Albany and moved to Albany. Very first day, pretty much, was Albany. And I've had associations with it for a very long time. And I got used to lazy, sweet Solano Avenue. And now I own a place on Solano and I've been keeping it as lazy and sweet as I can and friendly for my tenants. But this project, first, there's nothing interesting about it, despite what the architect says. I'm sure he likes it, but it's not interesting. And it sticks up like a sore thumb. I mean, it really is tall for that corner, which horrifies me. And my question is, do we need it? They have used every inch available, including popping over into city inches in the airspace by way of concessions and waivers. So this building is going to crank, right? There's some greed here. I have to say it. I'm sorry to insult anybody. I'm insulting, but they have to. And we are trading all of this. We're trading twenty-four parking spaces just for two lousy, low-income units, two lousy, affordable units supposedly. And I ask you, how affordable are they? You know, the HUD has a lot of them. They've got extremely low income, very low income, low income. Which is it? Because a lot of low income I can't even afford, and some of you might not be able to either. So I'm just saying that we don't, this is an exercise in futility for people like me. We can't exercise discretion anymore. Exploitation is going to go on, and it's unfortunate. But I'm sorry, you guys, to have to deal with this. It's a lousy project for this street. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much for letting me talk. I appreciate it. And I will make this brief. My name is Allison Grenstead. I live on Ordway Street. I agree with many of my neighbors who have spoken up against this project and many business owners who just have as well. I'm not against the housing or residential piece of this development. I think it's too big. I think adding the commercial or the overall size of the project is just too large for the street. I think the amount of resistance and unease you're hearing from Albany residents about this project is really an indication of just how, how much the street means to everybody and how much this will change the character of our city, or at least to me, I think it will. So my main point is I would ask the council to postpone a decision until you've looked at and investigated every potential possibility to reduce the size of this building or reject the project. Whatever legal avenues are available to you, although I know you're limited with that. And then the second piece, I'm just going to talk about from a personal perspective. I'm going to be impacted by the south-facing windows that were added to this building. Originally, the architect very kindly made smaller windows on the south-facing wall. But someone on the Planning and Zoning Commission suggested that they be larger. And now what's going to happen is all the neighbors on Ordway and parts of probably Ventura will, or maybe that's no Ventura, will now have exposure in their backyard. We will no longer be private. The residents, the renters in the building will just look straight down into everybody's backyard. And I think that's really unfortunate. And I'd ask that the planning or that the plans go revert back to the original architects' smaller windows. But that was it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Simon Dobzhinsky. I'm a resident of Albany for more than thirty years. I just want to point out one thing. There, some arguments were made in favor of the project because we are in a housing crisis. I just want to point out that this project won't do much to solve the housing crisis because the rent in Albany is sky-high. And what we need is housing, low-rent housing for low-income people. Even the low-income units that they propose are going to be way above the state average. And we are sacrificing, making all the sacrifices that were mentioned by previous speakers not for, not to solve the housing crisis, but to increase the profit of the developer. That's all is going to be, that's the purpose of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. Unfortunately, we are unable to hear you. Your connection shows us not being on mute in terms of Zoom, but we are not hearing you. Welcome. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Not coming through clearly yet. Oh, is it me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Yes, so I'm a new resident of Albany. This is Mary. And I oppose the project for all what other residents have said before and for all what other people have said before. It's just a two-large project. And Solano Avenue is the crown of Albany. And basically, this project is destroying and not fitting with the Solano Avenue landscape. So I just oppose the project. And as a new resident as well, I am supportive of lawsuits if that goes down the council and the city wants to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. You should, yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm Lauren Johnson. My wife Marilyn Johnson's here, and we live in nine-one-four Ventura. And there's been a number of issues with the building being proposed. First, if the application is approved, I would assume that there will be a lot of similar developments along Solano and Albany. There are a number of permitting changes being presented here. I would like to know now if you would like to entertain the concept of putting parking passes on the people who park on the streets, mainly, let's say, estimate, let's say, two parking permits per parcel. The second question I have, if the emphasis is on affordable units, why not use seven-nine-one seven-nine, seven-nine-one-five-point-seven-A as a density bonus law? If you use seven-five-nine-one-five-point-seven-A as a density bonus law, you get three affordable units for that complex, not two, as if you picked up just six-five-nine-one-five. Six-nine-one-five-K-two allows a commercial element to be applied to the building along, if indeed, the financial viability of the, if indeed there is a financial viability to the affordable housing units, if you apply the commercial. And my question then is, has anybody done a study going up and down Solano to ask the various owners there if indeed, if they did not have parking within seven hundred foot of their house? The seven hundred foot is apparently in ordinance of Albany, which says that it's reasonable parking. So if you denied parking to owners or to clients going to various shops up and down Solano, would they be going to those shops if they were denied parking? I think you would find the answer to that question is people would not come. This now goes back to the commercial element of the dynasty. The dynasty should contain the fourteen parking spaces that are asked to be permitted for that organ, for that element, simply because without those fourteen spaces, the dynasty would lose money, would lose affordability. And there subsequently, the commercial availability of the affordable housing would be decreased. Therefore, I hope that there will be a study to see if parking is an issue financially for this dynasty.
Thank you. Welcome. Hello? We can hear you.
Huh, miracle. I'm the immediate neighbor, Peter Goldberg's my name, on nine-nine-nine Ordway, adjacent to the property. Psychotherapy offices, obviously, we're going to be very affected by all of this. I'm not going to repeat all the things that have been said. I just want to say, though, I think this is important because this has to do with the process that the applicants, while claiming to be part of the community, have fastidiously, studiously avoided any contact with us at every step along the way. The architect has occasionally been in contact with us, but there's been no community feeling about this at all. And I think that all along the way, there's been a neglect at best of the concerns of the neighbors. The zoning commission, I mean, I was stunned to hear earlier when Jeff Bond, who I think his title is Community Development Director, actually said in this meeting that he doesn't believe in brokering a discussion between the applicants and neighbors. I think I heard that correctly. And then we have the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission coming on here, stumping for this. You know, this has been what it's like. This has been a kind of vanity project for the zoning commission. Not all of them, you know, one or two people spoke up with questions. This is concerning if you want to go forward. I mean, this is the city council. I would hope that the neighbors' concerns, even if they seem a little parochial, should be taken seriously. And, you know, I admire the mayor's great interest in the interior of this building, but I'm not sure that the same interest is being given to the concerns of the neighbors. And I'm not sure how helpless the city council really is or the zoning commission to try and make a better stand against the state. I understand that the legal issues are very great and the lawyers speak large here, but the community counts for some. Thanks. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, council. Good evening, evening in public. So my name is Jeremiah, and I just want to point out the fact that not all the city council is here in attendance. We're missing Janelle Gary. So I would move this to be forwarded to the next meeting to where the entire city council is present. You know, where do I start, right? There's not many studies done here, no parking studies. There's no neighborhood studies. And the current business right now is a preschool. And so you want to take away a preschool. And so you want to take away a preschool to put in an orthodontist and residential? That's just one less preschool in Albany. And you know, the thing is, is that you say it's a four-story building. Really, there are six levels. Right? The basement, the floors, and also the rooftop. So there's actually six levels, not four. On this low income, on this low income unit, would this landlord actually accept Albany cares? Would this landlord actually accept a second or third party check? You know, I was wondering how long it would take for the fire department to respond to someone that's having a heart attack on the roof? Fifteen minutes? It's too late. You know, the state laws are just guidelines, okay? The city is able to adopt our own laws, our own rules. The state law says twenty-five miles an hour in a school zone. Well, we can make it slower if we want to. I think this consultant was a little biased. You know, and what are you going to do to stop birds from landing on the roof? Are you going to put harmful bird spikes? You know, it's amazing to me how it's only one-third of the open space requirement. And literally, you got a bar across the street selling wine. You know, this, it's just not a good look right now. How many employees are going to be working here? And residential, you're going to look up to twenty-six parking spaces because they might need two spaces per unit. So also, it's going to provide nothing but problems, I foresee right now. And please pass this to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Jordan, members of the city council. My name is Alicia Guerra. I'm a land use attorney with Buckholzer, and I represent the applicant and property owner for the mixed-use project sixteen hundred Solano Avenue. This evening, I'd like to address four specific issues that have been raised this evening. First, I'd just like to express my support for the comments that the city attorney and Mr. Bond have raised this evening with respect to the requirements of state density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act. They are, I fully support their comments that the law is very clear as to how a local agency must evaluate a density bonus application for a mixed-use project. And as Ms. Subramanian indicated, the law is clear that waivers and concessions apply equally to the commercial as to the residential portion of the project. And the reason for this is to incentivize developers to provide affordable housing. And in this case, the provision of the density bonus, the waivers with respect to the standards that had been requested do not mean that the project is not inconsistent with the general plan and zoning. In fact, it is consistent. It meets the mixed-use zoning, and that's why there is a commercial component to this. So the commercial piece can't really be eliminated in order to continue to meet all of the requirements of the general plan and zoning. Having said that, I want to address three other items related to this. One is that the applicant and the information the city staff has provided have demonstrated that there is an actual identifiable cost reduction associated with the elimination of the parking as requested by the parking concession to the tune of about over a million dollars, including the other requested provisions and exceptions that have been identified as part of these concessions. That is one test. The second part of this is, there are some very significant physical site constraints that you heard from the architect that limit the ability to build this project and that demonstrate that we can meet the findings under Walmart. Thirdly, I'd like to just address that the categorical exemption document staff prepared fully evaluated potential traffic safety and hazards and emergency vehicle access to the building. The building must comply with the building code and life safety requirements. So to suggest that people might be exposed to undue hazards is not reflective and consistent with the analysis staff has provided. And additionally, I'd like to note that with respect to the water quality issues that were raised by prior commenters, the incorporation of the measures, the best management practices, even though not required because of the size of the project, will fully mitigate impacts associated with the project to Albany Creek water quality impacts associated with erosion
Thank you.
and drainage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Nathan raising her hand, but I first want to check and make sure people last opportunity to comment if they will. I am not seeing any hands raised. I see one hand raised. I personally can't keep track of people who already talked before. I don't think I've seen this name before. Welcome. You are, yes. Hi.
I, you know, I signed up for this. I don't know why I wasn't on the list, but that's okay. I'll keep this short. It was mentioned that there are other buildings like, like the project up and down Solano. I want to point out that these other units, these other residential units have parking. And they also have setbacks. I was also amused by the roof being considered, being considered open space. It's not. Open space is on the ground. Um, where you can go stand on, stand on the earth instead of standing up on the roof that not everybody's gonna have. Not everybody's gonna have access to. And finally, there's no parking at all. The people coming to the orthodontists are not going to ride their bikes and they're not going to ride the bus. I can see moms with little Johnny driving around and around the block, looking for a place to park. And finally, flinging the door open and going, run Johnny, run. Because there's nowhere for them to, to wait. And the people who are going to live there are not going to be riding bikes either. They're going to have at least two cars, at least. And somebody said earlier, people have three and four cars. And that's got to change, but it's not going to change by the time this building is built. And this building has to be built looking forward, that's, that's for sure. But it also has to be built looking at the way things are right now. So I recommend that the city council give this a big rethink before approving it. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Looking to see if any members of the public have a hand raised. I am not seeing any. So with that, I will close this public hearing and the discussion comes to council for deliberation. Comments, further questions that might have been raised? Yes, Councilmember Nathan.
Yeah, I raised my hand at the end of Alicia Guerra's time because I do feel that given the, that this is such a heavily legally oriented and legally constrained decision-making process, I did want to hear the rest of her comments, if she had additional comments beyond the three minutes. I think that this, this would, I don't know why she wasn't with the, the project proponent when the project was being laid out. But I, I think it would be valuable for us to be able to hear her entire comment if, if there was anything further that she was interested in telling us.
My sense was in the beginning of her comment, she said she had four points and she made four points. And the last was a little bit truncated, but to my sense, she got through the four points. So I'm not, not inclined to
Okay.
to carry on with that. Thank you for the suggestion. Councilmember McQuaid. You're on mute.
I'm on mute when I shouldn't be and off when I should be. We've been at this about two and a half hours. May I request a five-minute break?
That seems reasonable to me. Let's sense the other council members. I see general positive points. I think we'll say by acclamation, we are going to take a break for five minutes. And then we will be a little fresher for deliberating what to do next. I think maybe we're there. I think that was five minutes. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. Sounds good. Let's look at the timer right when I got off. So we are in council deliberation now. Thoughts, council members? Further questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Tuman.
Well, I've got a fair bit of commentary, but before we go into that, I wanted to check if there were any questions you noted down from public comment that we should revisit before we dive in.
That seems like a good way to go. I did note down quite a few comments, but give opportunity to any other council member if there were questions that they wanted to ask based on the comments, or we go to deliberation. Not seeing any. I'll just, so I will, I will go ahead. Let's see. Probably for the city attorney, does the condition of the adjacent intersection, it's been stated slash alleged, depending on your perspective, that it has substantial health and safety concerns? Does the adjacent intersection provide a basis for health and safety funding to deny approval in your, in your judgment, professional judgment?
No, it does not. The finding, I want to be very clear, it's not just a health and safety finding. It's finding a specific adverse impact. That finding is very specific. It has to be a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. And there can't be a feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the impact. I also want to make it clear that the impact would be associated with this project, not something that already exists that this project didn't create. And I think you heard Development Director Bond indicate, you know, there has to be a nexus associated with the project and impacts that are created and responding to those impacts.
Thank you. I think the contention was that it would, it would exacerbate the existing conditions. I don't think the contention was solely that there is an existing condition, but that this project would contribute to it due to motorist movements. And so I guess maybe in Director Bond's opinion, would this project generate enough new trips and enough new motorist movements to meet the test, if there is a test that was in place at the time that the application was submitted for a significant impact?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you. Let's see. Just going through and seeing, there was a question, when and how were Albany residents notified?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to respond to that. So we provide the same public notice we, on this application that we do for other public hearings. It's largely dictated by California Government Code, and it's three hundred feet from the edges of the property. And we send notices to the property owners, and if it appears that there is a tenant, we send additional postcards to tenants at that address. And in this case, I think it was roughly a hundred and thirty notices were mailed, and they were mailed on Friday, May twentieth. And by one of my colleagues taking it over to the post office on Solano Avenue.
Thank you. Would the, would the city, well, I presume the city would have latitude to go beyond, I mean, what you've described, I guess, is what's prescribed by state law. That the city could adopt a policy. It wouldn't have to be a one-off. It would have to be consistent, potentially, to go beyond that.
That's correct. I mean, the city could elect it. Now, this is quasi-judicial process, so we should treat this, this public hearing as we would any other public hearing. And I guess we could adopt a different radius. You know, for, for projects that, or plans that we do that are more policy-oriented, we do try to do different types of outreach, and we use our city newsletter and also We do try to do different types of outreach and we use our city newsletter and all sorts of other things that try to, to engage people. That is a policy discussion where, where we really do need to get the big picture. This is really comparing the application to the standards that are on the books and we try to follow that and how we issue the public notice as well.
Thank you. Yes, certainly. That would be another agenda item to further explore that. There's a question, where, where are the waste bins? I think both for the residences and for the commercial space.
It's in the, there is a trash room in the basement. I'm sure Colleen will bring that up if you want to see it, but there is a provision for a trash room. And as part of our building permit review, we, we do consult with stop waste and waste management to make sure it's functional for them.
Okay, thank you. There was a comment that Wardway would be closed. Turned into an informal cul-de-sac. I believe that was, it was mentioned a year and a half. So I presume that was a presumption that Wardway would be closed for construction. Is that likely to occur?
This is not our practice to allow a contractor to close a street. There may be a momentary closure with a flagger if a truck is making a particular move, movement one way or the other. But the intent is that traffic flows relatively smoothly. There's no question that construction is disruptive. And annoying, but we do try to keep the streets clear. Closing a street permanently in some nature introduces new complexities. For the residents and being both safety issues and trash pickup and, and all sorts of things. So it's, it's not as easy as just kind of putting up some bollards or something and calling it done. It's rather complex consideration. Again, that would be a completely different process that would, I would recommend be based on an analytical analysis of the traffic volumes and. And so forth to see whether it makes situation better or worse.
Thank you. Has any other jurisdiction approved a mixed-use project that weighs most all of the car parking? In the commercial portion, I'm not aware of any in Albany. I don't know, you know, anecdote, but I don't know if any staff members are aware of project that has done this elsewhere.
I took the opportunity in a meeting with some of my colleagues from other cities to inquire to this very question. A few months ago when this application first came forward. And at least in Alameda County, my colleagues didn't have a precise, precisely exactly the same scenario. We do know that other cities have. Approved density bonus projects where the project for one reason or another goes beyond the bare minimum of the requirements of the city. And those have been tested through litigation and the decision of the city to, to grant something a little bit beyond the bare minimum. And as an example, there was a project in San Diego where the courtyard was made bigger than it needed to be. Because the, the property owner, the developer wanted a nice amenity and made the building taller. And that the courts and Malick should really be the one to speak to the legal aspects of this, but that, as I understand it, that decision was upheld. As is within the scope of density bonus.
Okay, thank you. Do all the residents have access to the roof deck garden space?
I haven't asked that question. I presume so. I, I would think that would. It was intended to be common open space, so I can't imagine why we would authorize some restriction like that.
I mean, it does look from the plans like the, the common. Stairwell that goes up from the entry lobby goes all the way up to the roof and accessible from the common spaces. So unless it was card keyed, card keyed somewhere just for some residents, I don't know why it would not be accessible to all of them. Finally, there's a question, why Councilmember Gary is not here? She is recused, as I understand it. From, from this deliberation. I don't know, staff wants to say anything more about why she's recused. I don't know the details of that.
I'm happy to step in, Mayor Jordan. She did recuse herself, so there is no need to, to continue the meeting for her participation to avoid the appearance of a potential due process concern.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's correct there. I was associated with this question to continue the meeting so that she could participate. Because it's, it's a recusal rather than an absence. That would not obtain. So those are, those are the, well, there was actually one other question. A commenter said, if a different part of the government code was applied and I didn't get all the numbers that ended in K2. I think I got 6915K2, it would result in three affordable residences rather than two. I don't know. If you can respond to that, if you know the government code well enough to know what is being described there.
I think Mayor Jordan, there was a reference and that came up a couple of times with another speaker to government code 65915.7, which I also believe is the code that Councilmember McQuaid was referring to when she was asking her questions earlier, that provision did sunset. It sunsetted January 1 of 2022 and is not applicable.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So that's all I have from my notes. Yes, Vice Mayor Tien.
Okay, thank you for noting all those down, Mayor. Much appreciated. And also just thank you to all the staff and everyone who's worked on this project to bring it here to us and to work to make this meeting go smoothly. As well as, thank you to all of our commenters. I want to especially note that the comments were, I think, almost all largely non-combative, which was. A somewhat of a surprise, given the intensity of feeling that we've seen in the emails that we've gotten. So I thank everyone for keeping it civil. I have a lot to say here, none of which is going to be a surprise for my fellow council members or anyone who's been in a meeting about housing with me in the past four years. But I think a lot of it is important to be said. On the commercial end of this, we had a lot of commenters say, why don't we get rid of the commercial part? I think the case was made very clear in the initial presentation. We are getting the residential part of this project because of the want for a commercial space. Getting rid of the commercial part does not serve the purpose of the applicant. Of they want the commercial space, they want this office space. And not having it means that they're not getting, you know, the thing that they are instigating the project for. So in fact, having the commercial space is necessary. As well as it's a benefit of state density law that we have residential on top of that because that density law is allowing that commercial space to be constructed in the way and in the feasible manner that it means it can actually be constructed. So while I appreciate the suggestion, I just don't think it's going to work. And I also, you know, as I'll say again later. It's, as we've discussed, state density bonus and state law means that we can't require that commercial space to be gone, just because we don't like it. Moving on to the more generally. I would like to note, you know, I think it is very valid for people to have some fear or trepidation about big changes to their city. This is the city that many of us have spent a lot of money to live in, to have lived in for a long time, have raised families in or grown up in. So seeing big changes to what we view as the character of that city. You know, seeing that may make people afraid of what could happen and. And that's perfectly understandable and valid. I think what is not as understandable and what worries me more is translating that fear into vitriol against new development and any change whatsoever. And I think this is characterized by a lot of the comments we got, both in writing and in this meeting, have a but in them. They say, I support housing, but there's these reasons that I don't support this change. And I think we have to be really clear, as I've said in many council meetings before this and before I was on council. Whenever we're talking about housing, we have to be clear about what alternatives we're discussing and what that but means. So when we say. You know, I support housing, but we're saying, I know the housing crisis is. Getting worse, that rents are going up, home prices are going up and more people are being pushed into homelessness. But I'm worried about my parking. We were saying, you know, I know that people will not have access to the area that I think is so valuable. But I don't think this project fits with my view of the neighborhood. We're saying that the people who might live here should not have access to the neighborhood that we value so much. And should live somewhere else, maybe somewhere farther away where they have to spend a good portion of their day commuting to their jobs in the center of this major metropolitan area that we are in. And spend less time with their family. We are acknowledging that, but I just don't like the project. And I think that's the term we have to put things in. And I just cannot in good conscience ever allow the idea that the moral importance of the but of the, I don't like this project. Or I have worries about parking will ever outweigh the need to provide housing as a human right, something that. We in this region in the city have failed to do for many years and continue to fail to do. I just, I'm not saying these, these worries are not ever founded. I'm just saying we have to compare them to the need to develop housing. And that need is incredibly weighty. And I, I think it's very hard to justify when the alternative is people who do not have the financial resources of someone who lives here. Or we're not lucky enough to buy their home 30 or 40 years ago when it was maybe a quarter of the price it's worth now. I just don't think we can say that those people shouldn't live here because we don't like this project. And no project is ever going to be perfect. We have to accept that. On the state law question, as I highlighted in my questions, as we've talked about at various points throughout this long evening. State law really ties our hands. If we don't approve the requests here. We are going to get a lawsuit that is deserved and that we will lose. Because we're not going to be able to make the findings. And so I just don't think that's an option to, to do. State law has tied our hands and it's tied our hands for good reason. The, the state law here makes this project cost out. The concessions for parking, as the applicant said. Make it so that this project is feasible when it wasn't before because the parking creating it was too expensive and it made the whole project not work. And I think that's, that sort of thing is necessary. The state is doing what it needs to do. Because cities like Albany have for too long been kicking and screaming anytime new housing gets proposed. And so the, the more that we resist this sort of housing, the more likely it is that we will keep being written out of this process entirely. And more state bills will come down that say cities are just not moving fast enough and they're not doing enough. And so we need to take the wheel and to kind of take the choice away from them. So I think that's what we're buying ourselves with this sort of resistance to any sort of housing. And. Then just to, you know, sort of wrap this all up. We just really, I can't emphasize enough how much we need to build additional housing in Albany. And we need to build it everywhere in Albany. We can't just put it all on San Pablo for many reasons, not least of which is equity. Of we can't just put all of our housing in one place and say, well, these neighborhoods with expensive homes get to remain untouched. That's just not something that is going to work to meet our goals and it's not something I think that we can justify. And we need that housing to be forward looking. Some people said, people aren't going to go out their cars tomorrow. That's true, but this building is going to be around for decades. It's going to be around for a very, very long time. And so we have to look forward in planning this building because we're making a choice that's going to change. How things work for a long time looking forward. So I'll, I'll just try and wrap up by saying that I think this is ready to go. I think the, the moral weight is on us to pass it. I would be ready to move this forward once we have gone through our deliberation. And I'm really against having continuance because I don't think the facts of what we are being asked as a city council are going to change by anything that's been suggested. The project is going to stay largely the same. There is, I don't think substantive reasons to change it. I don't think the developer has really a reason to change it because the state law is on their side. And so what we're being asked to consider is not going to change. And I think it's incumbent on us to pass it now. And while there will be more talk about this later, as Jeff mentioned, you know, we will have more items related to this at some future time. I just don't think that more deliberation is going to really benefit the process. And speaking from experience, having, you know, town meetings with the developer seems to never be a useful process of it. Just is not constructive. So I think this is ready to move. I think it is a good change. And I think that while that change may be scary for some, it's a change that we really need to embrace. Because it's coming whether we like it or not, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you. I know that was long.
You, you hadn't spoken much until then, so certainly, certainly deserved your time. Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you. I want to start somewhere to Vice Mayor Tien and thanking everyone who participated tonight. There's still quite a few of you hanging in there with us. And for everybody who emailed us or called us or however we communicated with us, I really appreciate your reaching out to us. And as you heard tonight, we don't have a lot of discretion on these projects anymore due to state law. But I do have hope that we can continue to work on this project a little bit, making it a little bit more appropriate for this location while making it worthwhile for the developer. I think this project is really disappointing as I don't think Albany is getting enough from it. We're actually getting one additional low income unit because we required one anyway. So the project is giving Albany the absolute minimum that's required and yet receives significant waivers and concessions for the benefit of the developer and the property owner. I like the project in concept, especially the location on the eastern edge of Solano. I think it's important that we do spread our housing around throughout the city and to do anything else is reminiscent of the redlining days. You know, I realize most of our housing, a lot of our housing will go on San Pablo, but spreading it around is, is the best option. I think this project will bring more people to Solano. I think it'll be good for the businesses. It'll encourage, hopefully encourage some new businesses to come in. I do have concerns about the lack of parking, which as I've said before, can be, have the unintended, unintended consequences of being exclusionary. In addition to the severe impacts it'll have on the neighborhood. I would actually like to continue this to a date uncertain to allow for more discussion. With the goal of create a project which reinforces Albany's general plan while supporting new housing in Albany. Including this discussion, I think we've heard from the community that they really feel we left them out. And I think we need to take, take a big effort to, make a big effort to include them in the, in the process going forward. Even if it's only to explain the state law and make it more clear how, how things coming down from Sacramento really impact us. I, I think it's probably a good idea for staff to discuss this project with HCD, make sure that we're not missing something. I don't think that would be a huge big delay to do that. And I, I'd like to suggest a few moderate, what I consider moderate changes, which I think would make a better project. I would like to see a consideration of going to studio and one bedroom apartments. This, this I think would reduce the size of the building, could reduce the car need, reduce the cost of the rental. So we, I think that would expand the people that could, could live here and potentially could bring in, they could add another unit to kind of offset the cost of doing that. I'm still a little unclear of the medical office, but I'm wondering if, if. If there were going to be two providers, if they could share the office and share the common space of, you know, the bathroom, the reception area, the kitchen, that kind of thing to reduce the footprint there. Somebody on planning and zoning did suggest dropping one unit down onto that floor again to reduce the mass of the building. I'm not sure that would be a financial impact to the. To the property owner. And I'd also like these to be very low income units instead of. Low income units. And I think maybe consider making those. And I think maybe consider making those two units available for seniors. Just to, again, maybe people that may have less of a need for cars and may help on that side. So I think maybe there's some things we could do to reduce some of the impact with, without harming the financial piece for the property owner. I think at this point, that's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember Neese.
Yeah, um, I don't have any, any objection as the, as the staff has built in some time here to, and, and I guess buffered us with the possibility of another hearing. I wouldn't have any objection to our formulating and presenting to the developers some changes that we would like. But I think it's really important to understand that they, based on what we've seen tonight, they have a right to build this. I mean, it is effectively pre-approved by the state. We don't have anything like the findings that we would need to disapprove. The one point that I think we have, we, we may have a, something to insist on is that at least one of the two bedroom apartments be affordable. And, and I would like to see that secured. Although I'm not necessarily, I, I'm not in agreement that we want to eliminate two bedroom units. When, especially for below market rate. When we're looking at below market rate or we're looking at naturally occurring affordable housing, which I'll, I'll talk about that in a moment, but essentially when we're, we're concerned about lower, people with lower incomes being able to afford to live in Albany. Whether because they're benefiting from a developer extraction or a government subsidy, whatever it may be, we have a high concern with families that, with children. And one of Albany's premier amenities is its school district. And so to me, at least, there is an important equity component in including two bedroom units in any, any building that goes up. I, more generally, my, my comments are probably pretty close to what Vice Mayor Tiedemann has laid out. We desperately need housing. We need below market rate, but we also need market rate housing, you know? Albany is no, it was built as a place for young working families to be able to afford a home. And that is just not the reality anymore. It has become unreasonably expensive. Requiring parking makes it more expensive. It's basically saying, if you can't afford a parking spot, you don't belong here. And I don't think that that's, that's right. There are many people who, who don't necessarily drive a car. And there are people who do drive a car who will park on the street. You know, all of our, our homes, all of our single family homes just about, there are exceptions, but the overwhelming majority have a garage or a driveway or both, you know, we do. And, and a lot of us, our garages are full of stuff. They're not places that we use to park. So there may be a lot more parking available than we really think about when, when parking gets a little bit more tight. But in any event, having places that, that do not have parking seems important. And I, and I hear from some of the neighbors, including Mr. Chastity, that, you know, that they, they acknowledge the lack of park, that not requiring parking for the housing makes some sense. And on the parking for the, the medical, a few points on that. First of all, we, when we were developing the general plan, we were pretty clear that we wanted ground floor commercial activities. Because we want the liveliness. We also were clear that we want medical offices that our population can, our resident population can walk to. So I see the medical offices as, as a beneficial aspect of the project. And as far as waiving the, the parking requirements for the commercial, I do agree with those who have indicated or suggested that it does seem like a pretty dramatic concession to waive the part, want all of the parking for the, the commercial. But that is, that does appear to be the law. And it has, and this project is probably a perfect example of what it achieves, which is if, if we didn't have it, we wouldn't be getting the units. And we want the units, both the market rate and the below market rate. And I also want to point out, we have, there is already in excess of fifteen hundred feet of floor area and just two parking spaces. So when we talk about fourteen parking spaces for the commercial, I think it's important to realize that half of that, we already have half that amount of commercial with only the two onsite spaces. So the change, the, the waiver of the parking is not quite as dramatic as it seems to be. So in sum, I'm, if it's important to people to, to put this over to, and I'm, I think that the community, I have to give my both thanks and kudos to the folks who, who brought out the community. We have had more community input on this than I think we've had on pretty much anything during my tenure here. So I don't see a need for more community input, but if other people do, I'm, I'm happy to defer to that. And I'm happy to continue to work amongst ourselves on trying to develop a list of things that we'd like to ask the developer to voluntarily incorporate into the project. But I don't think that, that we have a right to, that we have a right to demand anything except that one of the two bedroom apartments be below market rate. And finally, I want to emphasize, and I'm, I'm a daily walker through this area. We do need to do something about that, that intersection. But that isn't this developer's responsibility. So I hope we can, as a community, perhaps the approval of this project will energize us all to start thinking hard about what we can do both in the short term and the long term to make that a safer, a safer spot. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't know, to Councilmember McQuaid's interest, I don't know what, doesn't seem like we have any tools to require any change of the project. I didn't get a sense from the applicant that they had any interesting change. I explored that a, a little bit. We could, you know, potentially explore it more in another hearing. That would be the context that we could explore it in as a council, could not explore otherwise. I, I understand not optimistic that anything would change.
I'm not suggesting that we would demand anything. I'm just suggesting that there might be a possibility of coming up with a solution that better meets everybody's needs. But I'm not hearing a support for that, so.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to explore it. So who, who would come up with the financial case for an alternative? That be staff? Would you provide direction to staff? Would some of us do it? I, I don't, you know, I don't think we can do that outside a meeting on an item like this.
I don't think we have the expertise either. Well, I think it would have to be a more vetted conversation, perhaps bringing in someone who has their expertise in this area that could, could help.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a, I mean, the clock is ticking, as I recall. If we were to continue it, it would be to, well, particularly if, if that was to be the direction, it would be to the second meeting in June, at least. Staff told me otherwise. I'm not even sure it could be gotten together by then. I heard sixty days was the current law for processing. I don't know when that dates from. Is that from the date of the application or the date of the first meeting?
It hasn't actually started, Mayor Jordan, because it's from the date of the determination of, of the sequel, which is the notice of exemption. And the council hasn't taken action on that.
Okay.
But I think there's.
As we want, then we will have a certain number of meetings, but we can space that one on.
I think it may be helpful if, if there's a desire to ask the applicant, you know, I mean, there's some presumptions of, would the applicant be willing to consider some of these voluntary, voluntary requests? The, and it, and we would need to do it as part of this public process. So that could be done now and rather than waiting and we're continuing this to a future meeting.
That seems, I like that. I presume the, I see that the applicant and architect, or at least the architect is, is here. So maybe they could be admitted again. I can see the architect has their hand raised. And maybe while we're waiting for the architect to be admitted, do we call running across something that the Fair Housing Act? I don't know that that has been discussed or presented here at all. What are the requirements of that state law? Or if they have any nexus with what we're doing tonight?
We, we can't discriminate on certain housing, whether it be affordable housing or housing that is for persons with different abilities.
So I thought I'd heard from somebody that had some sort of geographic component to it in terms of how housing is distributed across a jurisdiction. But I'm not hearing that that's the case from you. So that's inaccurate information that I read or got lost in my brain. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thanks.
So I think that the idea here is this is an opportunity for a conversation against the city attorney to discuss some of the ideas that Councilmember McQuaid raised. I, I don't know if you want to raise some of them or one of them.
Actually, if, if you'd like, I can address the idea of changing the units to studios on one bedrooms. The number of units are limited that we can build. So by lowering the size of these units, you might be able to get the building to shrink. But it doesn't provide any affordable units that are two bedrooms. Plus the affordability of those market rate units are in a way, the two bedrooms allow for two people to actually occupy. Where the one bedroom is just one income and that way it tends to sort of make the market rates be a little bit more affordable. But the bottom line is that we can only build so many, we can only build twelve units based on density bonus. We can do thirteen or fourteen or more. So the idea was to build ones that made the most sense to us. Again, we're all ears. If that didn't move the needle for you, but.
Yes, Councilmember Neese.
Yeah, what about one of the, one of the two bedrooms being one of the below market rate units? Is that acceptable? Do you disagree with our analysis that that is something that, that should be provided?
Ultimately, it's Leila's call to say yes or no to that. But from what I know and the affordable or housing projects that we've done, which we've done quite a bit of, you have to spread the units across evenly. You can't just pick the smaller units and make those affordable. So in a way, in a way, the answer is yes, unless Leila says no.
Leila, are you comfortable with what we're talking about here? Oh, we can't hear you.
I, I can't make that decision on my, on, by myself. Unfortunately, my husband is traveling. But we are absolutely here to do everything by law. I mean, that's this whole project. Since the initial time, we just, you know, couldn't build because it was not economically feasible. We came back, as I mentioned, you know, five years later, with the intention of doing everything legally, everything right. So and I think, I, I have no knowledge of what that is, but I will assure you that we will do everything, you know, legally and no going, cutting corners or going around or trying to justify. So.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if there are other suggestions you wanted to explore.
Would you consider making a very low income instead of low income units?
Honestly, I don't even know what that means. So again, I, I, I have no knowledge of that other than we will do everything legally. So I have no idea what, what that means. So I wouldn't, I'm not qualified to answer that question.
I think this goes to what, what process could be pursued to allow them to explore that question, I guess. The council could express his interests. Yes, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Just point out that Director Bond did note that that aspect of the process of the affordability restrictions does come before us at a later date after we've approved this. So I think we do have a built in time to discuss it and to, you know, discuss the options available as well as what we're comfortable with. And that, that is, you know, when that happens, that's the time to have this discussion. I see Jeff nodding, so I think I'm getting it right.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That was exactly what I was going to say is if, if there are details that we want to explore some opportunities to make the affordable housing more affordable, then that may involve in most cases, if we're going beyond our regulatory authority, that probably means we're putting money on the table. And we should, I, I'm not prepared to say this evening whether something, resources would be available to do that beyond our own city funds. So what I would say is that if the project were to move forward, you could give us direction tonight to, and when we bring the affordable housing agreement to you to bring forward an analysis of, of here, either here are the options or here's where we get the debt it ends towards trying to provide a, a deeper level of affordability or perhaps some other aspect of, of making that housing serve the community as best as we can.
I like the sound of that. Because, yeah, we didn't understand, we don't have the latitude to acquire very low income. So, but that, that's a viable approach. It could be discussed at that time potentially. Any other thoughts to that? Yes.
I'm sorry, but I just, in my notes, there was one other suggestion to, if, if we end up with two practices to actually combine the, the common uses somewhat. I mean, there's going to be bathrooms and kitchens and so on. I'm a concern taking a look at that. As, as we develop.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I don't, I don't know if part of the, the goal of that was to reduce the, the building size. Um, Councilmember McQuaid, I don't know if that would be the end result of just that one step without changes in the residences as well.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I didn't quite hear what you said. Could you repeat? Wait, not Preston, not you.
Sure.
Repeat that.
I'm going to break in for a moment though, noting we're at ten twenty-nine, actually paying attention this time. Um, so if somebody could, uh, make a motion to extend however long they, yes, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
I would move that we extended ten forty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting to ten forty-five. City Clerk, would you please call the council?
Councilmember Nason.
I.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
And Councilmember McQuaid.
Yes.
And it's extended to ten forty-five.
Thank you. As you were.
So I'll, I'll repeat it. Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, what, what I heard you say, uh, was that maybe there's a way to combine the, uh, common spaces for the two practices, if that's the way it goes. I wasn't exactly sure what we would gain by doing that, but, um, I just was offering that we could take a look at that option as we go forward and those, um, suites are laid out.
I think, um, thank you. I think one of the commissioners on planning and safety or planning and zoning had mentioned, mentioned that as a possibility of pulling that in a little bit and then dropping down one or two units to bring down the height of the building. If, if it doesn't change the footprint of the building, I'm not sure how, how worthwhile it is, to be quite honest, but certainly, you know, that would be up to your discretion.
Thank you.
And let's see, so maybe some discussion of, um, conditions of approval. Then we come back to continuation, just to put those on the table. So I think there's five conditions of approval that were recommended by planning and zoning. Um, it looks to me like conditions one A through C have been implemented in the plans that are in front of us now. I presume those are the plans of record that we would be approving for design review. So maybe those conditions aren't required to be in the resolution since they've already been implemented. Um, so that's a question for Director Bond.
Um, I, I kind of like to keep them there just to be, to note that that was an important piece. Sometimes projects evolve a little bit, particularly floor plans in the building permit stage, and I like keeping those special conditions in there just so that we make sure to go back and double check that they're achieved at the end of the project, at the end of the design. So my preference is.
I know for one day regards to the bike parking room, and as it's currently designed, all the bikes are one wheel on the ground and otherwise hanging from the wall, which is okay for able-bodied people, but not so okay for everybody rides a bike. Um, I mean, depending upon the size of the residences that, that ultimately happen, if they happen, uh, there might be children in this building and their bikes aren't gonna, you know, not gonna be able to hang their bike on the wall. There might actually be older people who ride bikes, if that's happen, uh, who don't have the capability to lift them up. One of the first people I met in Albany, Stario Manicetti, and, uh, he had extreme zatika and he actually used a bike, biked one-legged around town, um, as a mobility device. And, uh, so I think having all the bikes hanging from a wall is not really viable from my perspective. So I'd want that condition of approval to, to state that the parking is on the ground. Um, and, let's see. Um, their condition of approval, one E, is to size up the balconies so that they, they meet the minimum legal definition of open space. Is that something we want to keep in or not, given, um, the architect's description, explanation of why, um, smaller balconies have been designed?
Yes, please. Uh, we actually have expanded them by, uh, eighteen inches in the long direction, and that seemed to proportionally work just fine. Beyond that, uh, it would be a little hard to accommodate.
Yeah, my understanding was if they were to be legal spaces, they would need to not extend along the building anymore, but project out from the building a bit more dimensionally.
Right.
I have that right?
Yes.
I initially appreciated your, your explanation. I don't know if the council has any thoughts on keeping that condition of approval or removing it? Seeing, I'm gonna guess, yes, Councilmember McQuaid.
I, um, I appreciated your comments on, on that. I hadn't really thought about it that way, that the more space you, I think it's part of a human behavior, the more space you have, the more space you fill up. And, you know, it does look, it can start to look a little trashy if it's just kind of a helter-skelter storage area. And, and I also have concerns about putting too much stuff out there and then putting a lot of people out there. And we've, we've seen that with tragic results in Berkeley and probably other cities. So I think maybe smaller is better. It kind of eliminates that danger or reduces the danger. I don't think you can eliminate it.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yeah, I, I don't have a hugely strong opinion on this, but I generally agree with Councilmember McQuaid of, uh, I don't think we absolutely need to keep it.
Okay. So I'm here in general. I think three of us at least, uh, with the other not, not expressing, and she will, um, that that condition of approval can be removed. Uh, staff is keeping, keeping a list. Um, I think we're reconfiguring that fourth floor bedroom. I don't think that needs to be condition of approval. The applicant will have their own motivation to do that. Um, can we make, uh, lock in the building being all electric as a condition of approval since that's been offered by the applicant? Question to staff.
Um, I don't know that we at this moment in time have that regulatory authority to blanket, as a blanket requirement. I think it's a practical matter. Um, it, it's, we've kind of tilted the table towards that in the, in the green building, um, standards that we've adopted in the green, in the evolution of the building code that will be occurring over the next, uh, seven months. Um, but I, 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 we don't have a regulatory basis to do that today, flat out.
Okay. Very good. Um, could there be a condition of approval to, uh, bundle transit passes into the rental?
Uh, again, we don't have a residential transitory development obviously on the books. Um, it's something that I think we do need to work on.
Okay. Um, I'm not a condition of approval, but I would ask the, the applicant to add ballards to protect the cargo bikes that are, um, going to be parked in the, the garage. I also think you could probably get three in there because there's a little over eleven feet long reserved for one along the wall between the garage door and the lobby door. Um, those bikes aren't that long. Hold the walls long enough, you could probably park two there. I would add or expand the condition of approval on having outlets in the bike room to include having outlets by the, the cargo bike parking spaces in the, in the garage. Um, as far as the bike racks on Pull It Right Away, city property, of which I think there's two, it would be nice to stay with the, I think the theme that has developed in Albany of the bike-shaped bike racks rather than the hoops which are used in Elsriedo, so as a sort of place-making. Um, so instead substitute the cut sheet for the bike, bike racks. And, yeah, that's, that's all I have. We're at that point. Do we want to continue with some? Yes, Councilmember McQuaid.
Um, we may not have authority for this, but the two parking places we have, could we either require electric chargers or require them to be charger-ready?
I think our green building code already requires them to be charger-ready, and it requires twenty percent to have a charger. I don't know how that works when there's only two spaces. If you round down and so they're not required to have any chargers.
You, you, you're correct on both counts, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And so I don't think we have the latitude to require those to have chargers.
They will be charger-ready.
Charger-ready, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Uh, if that's, if it's the time, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two uh, dash fifty-one, uh, with the discussed change to exhibit B one to remove, uh, the condition for approval one E.
Yes, Councilmember Nason.
Yeah, um, would you consider a friendly amendment? I, I remain uneasy about waiting for the, uh, affordable housing agreement, uh, to have reassurance that there would be at least one below market rate, um, two-bedroom apartment. If that is a condition of approval, um, it would, uh, it would be, it would be reassuring and, uh, I would be willing to, to go forward tonight.
Um, I'd ask Director Bond if that's something we can put as a condition of approval.
I, I believe that there's support in our municipal code for that condition of approval.
Um, okay. Uh, I, I think I'm okay with that friendly one. I'm comfortable with the process we have. We've received a lot of assurances that essentially our law says this is how it's got to be, and that's, that's probably going to be. But I think if we want to put it in there that the condition of approval is essentially to be consistent with our law as written, that it be, you know, spread across the different types of units, then I'm, I'm very happy to accept that.
With that change, I'll second the motion.
Um, I guess a friendly, a friendly amendment request, um, could we specify the intermediate-sized two-bedroom? Cause there's three different sizes of two-bedroom. There's a small, medium and large, so.
Sure.
Okay. Um, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, which itself contains the three approvals. Um, that'll be necessary for the projects. With the, uh, various conditions as laid out, I might have to ask staff to, to repeat that. I mean, we know that we've removed one E and we have added, um, a condition that one of the intermediate-sized two-bedroom residences would be affordable at low income. Um, we know about one A through D because that's listed. Um, and then there were a few other things that, that I mentioned that I can try to rough-kick it. I don't think actually any of them made, really made it in there except for maybe adjusting the, um, the, uh, power receptacle language regarding the bike room to include, um, charging ports at the cargo bike spaces in the garage. And to, um, substitute specified bike, bike racks in the public right-of-way. I'm also note that Director Bond mentioned, um, adding some language, uh, regarding the stormwater, um, management analysis to the CEQA analysis. So that would be another friendly amendment to, to add that language.
Uh, yes, I, uh, thank you for reminding me. I was meaning to ask whether, because I vaguely remembered we had to add some language. Um, so yes, I think that all works.
All right.
Mayor Jordan, can we just confirm? Mayor Jordan, can we just confirm that the second, or I think that was Councilmember Nason, also agrees to those revisions?
Thank you.
She's nodding her head.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm intrigued by the possibility of the applicant agreeing to one or two very low-income residences. Um, but I guess we have the mechanism to continue to have that discussion down the line. All right, while I guess with that, um, City Clerk, please call the council.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nason?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Let me look at what I'm doing here. At that endpoint, ten forty-four. Thank you all for all your input and your consideration of this challenging issue, I would say, given state law. Um, I thank Vice Mayor Tiedemann, Councilmember McQuaid, Councilmember Nason, um, staff, the applicants, the public that is here and has done so much work, um, providing us input on this, this project. And the next stop will be discussing what is possible, further possible with the affordable residences. And with that, we are adjourned.